Send any of you.
Enjoy your time.
Time is 7:00 PM. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Newington Town Council for Tuesday, November 25th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, a motherland, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call soon.
Here.
Here.
House.
Here.
House of Gonzalez.
Here.
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 Yeah. Here. All right, we have a quorum. Moving on to approval of the agenda, any changes anyone saw on the agenda that they would like to raise? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve. Motion my counsel supports seconded by Counselor Teniacus. Any discussion on approving the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
The opposed abstain? All right, motion carries unanimous, agenda is approved. Right, front and center on the agenda tonight is a presentation from our tax assessor Danielle DeBolino in regards to the reevaluation. Danielle, the floor is yours. Come on up, thanks for being here. And yeah, of course.
While I'm sharing my screen, just a quick introduction, I'm Danielle DeBolino for the new counselors, welcome. I'm the deputy assessor right now. To my left is Lawrence LaBarbara, our interim assessor. And on my right is Monique Michon, our GIS technician. All right. So as you guys know, we just completed our 2025 revaluation. So I just want to give a little overview on that process. All right, so why do we need a revaluation? It is an equalization of the values of all the properties within a municipality for the purpose of a fair distribution of the tax burden. It is also required to be completed every five years by state statute. Um, we put the project out for RFP and contracted with Equality Valuation Services to assist the town in conducting the revaluation. And I just kind of wanted to give a quick overview of some of the things that equality did for us throughout the revaluation. They took new pictures of every single parcel. They sent and processed residential data mailers, processed income, processed commercial income and expense reports, did a full-scale analysis of all commercial and residential properties. They built models and valued all of our parcels. They printed and mailed the assessment notices that went out a couple of weeks ago. And they're conducting both commercial and residential informal hearings. So, quick overview of the makeup of our grand list. Personal property makes up about 10.8%, motor vehicle about 10.7%. And real estate makes up 78.5% of the total grand list. That's kind of how important revaluation is to the overall grand list. And another quick overview, we have 12,540 parcels in real estate, 70% of which are residential, 20.2% are condos, 5.5% is commercial, and 4.2% is vacant land. I think it's important to start with the difference between single property appraisal and mass appraisal before introducing value methodology and statistical measures. Single property appraisal is the valuation of a particular parcel as of a given date. It's also known as a fee appraisal. So if you hired an appraiser and they came and did an appraisal on your house, it would be a fee appraisal. Mass property appraisal is the development of a valuation model capable of replicating the forces of supply and demand over a large area. It is standardized, it is standardized procedures and statistical testing. Within the mass appraisal, the, within mass appraisal, we use three different methods to value properties. The first of which is the sales comparison approach. The sales comparison approach uses a large data set of recently sold properties that we call comparables to estimate the value of other properties with similar characteristics. This is the primary method to value residential properties. So what constitutes a valid fair sale that will be used in that valuation method? It requires a willing buyer and seller, no, with no undue influence. Both the buyer and seller have knowledge of what they are doing, and there is an exchange of funds. It's also known as an arms-length transition, transaction. The second method is called the cost approach. It uses the principle of substitution to estimate property values by calculating the cost to replace the building. This method is used for new construction, construction in segments with limited sale data. The third is the income approach. This capitalizes the earning capability of a property into value. This is the primary method used to value commercial properties. So, I mentioned a little bit at the beginning when I was talking about mass appraisal on the performance-based testing standards. I just wanted to give a quick overview of the, the sources we use for those standards, the first being the International Association of Assessment, Assessing Officers, IAAO. They provide the technical standards that provide the framework for appraising pop properties accurately, equitably, and efficiently. The second is the Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisal Practice, UCAP. This provides the groundwork for conducting mass appraisals and reviewing revaluations. The final one is Connecticut General Statutes. Performance-based testing standards can be found in Section 12-62I. So what are those standards? The first is the median assessment ratio, which is the ratio at which properties are assessed relative to the sale price. This measure must be plus or minus 10% of the required 70% assessment ratio. For this revaluation, we were at 67%. Second is a coefficient of dispersion. This is a measure of horizontal equity between groups of properties. For all real property, it must be 15% or less. We were at 5.88%. The price-related differential is a measurement of vertical equity between high and low-priced properties. This measurement must be between 0.098 and 1.03. For our revale, we were at 1, which is considered very good. Once you do those, we do what's called the unsold property test. This test is a performance for the entire population of properties, both sold and unsold. This number must be between 0.95 and 1.05. We are right at 1.05 for the unsold property test. I just figured I'd put a quote in there, when a revaluation is made in conformity with laws and required, the requirements of professional standards, the result values can be presumed to be accurate estimates of the underlying market value. So what was our overall increase? 51.39%. So, residential properties, we have about 8,774 parcels, which represents 70% of all real estate parcels. The overall increase for residential parcels was 55.50%. The 2024 median market value was $232,688. The median market value for the 2025 grand list is $343,600. I have a couple of charts in here that kind of just show average versus old market value by style for the residential properties. As you can see, there is an increase in every single style. The next one is your average percent increase by style. It's kind of hard to see the percentages at the bottom, but you get the idea, they're pretty much ranging between 45 and just in the low 70%. Next, I'm going to quickly just go over the condominium properties. We have, we have 2,535 condominium parcels, which is 20.2% of all. The overall increase for condominium, condominiums was 64.80%. The 2024 median market value for condominiums was $143,820. And for the 2025 grand list, we're looking at $243,100 as the median market value. Again, I just put a couple of charts in there just to show you the average old versus new market value by the different complexes that we have here in the town of Newington. The next one would be the average percent increase by complex. And again, it, I think it's important to remember that these are based on the market. For commercial properties, we have 557 parcels, which is only 5.5%. The overall increase for commercial was 37.05%. I just put in there a little percent increase by segment. So apartments had the greatest increase at 58.5% with office buildings coming in at the lowest at 18.19%. Vacant land, 587 parcels of vacant land. The overall increase on vacant land was 13.99%. I broke it down for you to show you that residential vacant land went up 4.34% and commercial went up 15.86%. So what are the next steps? We're currently holding our informal hearings. The decision notices for the informal hearings will go out early January. We're going to sign the grand list by January 31st. At that point, we'll send out assessment notices for personal property, and we'll finish up the motor vehicle grand list as well. The Board of Assessment Appeals, the applications to go before the board are due on February 20th. They'll hold their hearings in March. The town budget process will take place April and May, and the tax bills reflecting the new assessments will go to the taxpayers in July. I just wanted to quickly go over some of the exemption and tax, tax relief programs that we have available. There is the elderly and disabled homeowner's tax credit, which we have a state and local option for that. And the benefit amount is determined by income and annual taxes. We have several types of veterans exemptions. We have honorably discharged veterans benefit, 100% disabled, permanent, and total veterans exemption, and state and local optioned low-income veterans exemptions. We also have an exemption for those determined to be legally blind, which is a $300 assessment reduction, but proof is also required. Finally, we have a social security totally disabled exemption, which is a $1,000 assessment reduction, whose proof is also required. Anybody who's watching, who would like more information on our available exemptions and tax credits, please contact the assessor's office. So we tried to put as much information as we could out to the public regarding the revaluation. On the assessor's office website, we have, we have all sorts of different kinds of reports. We have a valid sale reports for commercial, residential, and condominiums. We have old-to-new market value reports, we have old-to-new assessment reports. We put them right at the top of the revaluation website to make them really easy to find. Equality, who we contracted with, also has a valuation website where taxpayers can view their property information, obtain a new field card, search properties by type, location, neighborhood. They can search for sales information, and that would also be the same website that they would use to schedule an informal hearing. We have, on our online mapping system, the GIS, we have property information, interactive mapping, and a sales data overlay. So if you were to go on that website, you could actually do an overlay and see all of the sales from 2023 or 2024. When that's a fantastic way to kind of view sales. Last but not least, and the reason why Monique is here, is she put together what actually is the first of its kind in the state of Connecticut on a, for a data platform that a town would have post-revaluation to provide as much information as we could to the public. We searched, there is no other town that has done this, so I'm going to hand it over to Monique.
Okay, thank you for the introduction. As Danielle said, we have a lot of great resources at our disposal in order to access this assessment data, and many of them do utilize GIS quite heavily. But the one I'm most excited about is this project that we've been working collaboratively on for the past couple of months here, developing the first interactive revaluation data platform for a municipality. So I'll start by giving a quick overview of the website, and then I'll briefly go into a couple of these pages just to give you a sense of what the site is capable of, but I'll try to keep it brief. So this is the initial landing page, you can see a lot of great information linked here. We have some frequently asked questions linked to contact information, the town revale page. If you come, I'm just going to move myself. If you go up to the top corner, there's some graphic user instructions, which can be quite helpful for navigating the site if you so choose. And it's broken up into three main sections, so these first four buttons up here are property search pages. So these are good if you're looking to search for specific parcels' assessment information comparing 2020 to 2025. And then zooming out a little bit for the second section here, we have our data insight pages. So this is kind of looking at the entire townwide data assessment data set. And what these are doing is they provide a lot of interactive data widgets, charts, graphs, in order to really see the trends of assessment data on a broader scale. So this is especially helpful for residents to truly understand what are some variables? What are some factors that are contributing to the actual property value assessment? And then finally, we have the third section, the valid sales data, what Danielle mentioned. This is kind of combining those two concepts where users can either search valid sales that were incorporated into this revale or simply see sale insights. So what are the general trends? What's contributing to higher sale prices, lower sale prices within this revale period for recently sold properties in Newington? So quickly jumping into one of these pages, they're divided by property type, but they're all extremely similar. So what you're going to see on the initial landing page is all of the parcels that are designated, for example, this one's residential. So you can go up to the search bar here and type in a random address. I will choose 33 Atwood Street. And so the site will zoom to that property. And then once a parcel is selected in this left panel here, it'll be all sorts of descriptive information. So we have a comparison bar chart, we have attribute data, things like acreage, finished area, year built. And as we scroll down, there's a detailed table breakdown of the 2020 revale versus the 2025 revale by building, land, other, and then the total of all three. And then right at the bottom, they can see that value change in both dollar amount and percentage. Some contextual information down there. And then the bottom panel then shows the totals for the town, so the sum of the assessment value. And then that total residential, in this case, value increase for the town. So this is also extremely helpful for residents to be able to compare maybe what their value change is and how it fits in within the town. So if I was living at 33 Atwood Street, I could see that it's just under that total for the town. And while you can search using this bar, the map is also completely interactive. So any parcel that I'm clicking on, it will view and display the exact same descriptive information. So if I wanted to look at my neighbor's property, I could see 29 Atwood Street, or if I just wanted to explore around town. So for example, we see here that they have a slightly higher value percent change. But then I can also go back up here and see, okay, what might be contributing to that? Perhaps that the style is a bungalow versus a cape, et cetera, et cetera. So that is the same for all of these property types, to give you an idea, same thing. So moving on to the data insight pages. So there's a lot of information on these pages. Again, this is looking at every single data point by property type in the town. But this is a really good visual in order to see these trends. So for example, we have some scatter plots that's showing as the finished area increases, so does the assessment value. The newer the property, on average, the higher the assessment value. There's some bar charts, and everything is interactive. So if you go over it, you can clearly see the averaged assessed value, the exact same charts that Danielle was explaining. Tutor seems to be the highest. Neighborhood codes, so if you have your neighborhood code, you could see exactly where it fits in within the townwide data. And a lot of these pages as well have interactive maps. So this one, for example, is depicting the delineation of neighborhoods within Newington. But I can go around and either find my neighborhood or just explore and click on it and find the different neighborhood codes and assessment values. I'm going to quickly pop into one other page just to show you the differences. So this one's condo, but again, commercial and vacant are also different because they're assessed on different factors, obviously. So for example, condos are considering unit location, complex, things like that. And the data, I'm going to give it a second to load here. Get so fine-grained that you can even go down into each complex itself and compare different model types. So really, any and all data that was used in this process is available and at the disposal of residents. And then the final page I'll quickly go over is the valid sales data. So same thing, there's an interactive map where you can search an address if you happen to know a valid sale. And again, give it a second to load, I'm flipping pass, pass between the beats. Again, searching a random address. It'll display all of the related sales information. And again, these are valid sales from October 1st, 2023 to October 1st, 2025. So again, I can go around the map and click maybe on different properties within the neighborhood that I'm interested in. These are symbolized by year, I can toggle on and off if I only want to look at commercial sales. And from a resident perspective, if I was interested in seeing the valid sales that were incorporated into this, I could even throw on a neighborhood layer if I know where my neighborhood is and look at specifically the valid sales within my neighborhood code. And then finally, at the bottom here, we have those sale insights that I was talking about, divided by commercial, residential, and condo. So again, just seeing those general trends of all the data points within Newington. You can see what types of things are contributing to a higher or lower sale price. So super interactive, a lot, a lot of data to play around with here, but to hopefully give residents a better picture, or at least somewhat of a better understanding of what is actually being contributed to their data value. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I think during my last presentation, I said I wanted to make sure that, that there was a lot of transparency. And I think doing this data website and having this platform and having all the reports out there, I would hope gives the taxpayers in Newington a feeling of transparency from the assessor's office.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. This is amazing presentation you guys have put together. And to your point, you guys have been great communicating the information up to this point, which I think has made a huge difference. Opening it up for questions from council, I guess I'll kick this off. How does those increase, the average increase, how does that compare to surrounding towns? Are we pretty consistent with our neighbors, or is there a big difference?
Yeah, I was keeping a close eye last year on Weathersfield, because it's very similar to us. Similar makeup, and we are very in line with them as well.
Very good, thank you. Counselor Gonzalez.
I don't have a question, I just wanted to say thank you for this program. I think that it's amazing, I can't wait to go home and play with it. It's awesome. Yeah, no, it looks like it's a lot of information that I hear the questions people asking, so thank you very much for doing that. I'm sure that was not a quick and easy process.
No, she's, it was phenomenal to be able to just sit down with her, brainstorm it, and, and I just gave her the reports and said, have fun.
Yeah, and we're the only one that's doing this, so we are trendsetters.
We are trendsetters, for sure.
Awesome, thank you. Good work.
Counselor Teniacus.
I'm going to echo what Counselor Gonzalez said, I know this is like no small task to do. So I appreciate all three of you and the hard work that you've done. Website's very cool, I don't even want to think about how hard it was to put this together, so. Yeah, my hat's off to Hugh, this is awesome. Definitely would love for our town staff and stuff like that to make sure that this is really accessible to everybody. Push this out, make sure everyone even knows it exists. But together, thank you so much, this is awesome.
Thank you.
Counselor Floyd.
I'll add to what my colleague said, I have my weekend plans. I dive very deep into that website, that is amazing. It's such an amazing amount of data that you had to compile. So congratulations on generating that, that is just remarkable. And like you said, I have heard you'll always get folks worried about their assessment, concerned about the sticker shock that is that new value. But I have heard nothing but positive reflections on how transparent this process has been from when folks have reached out to the assessor's office, to when they've reached out to other town staff, and you know, questions get directed your way, there are quick answers. Folks know what their opportunity for recourse is, and they understand what's driving those changes. And that is so, so, so important, so thank you for doing that. I do have one really quick question, which is just about the informal hearings themselves.
Yeah.
Obviously, those are happening right now.
Yep.
Are folks taking advantage of them? Have there been quite a few that have happened? What has that been?
I think there were 379 as of today. Wow.
That's great.
That's only a couple percent.
Yeah, that's not a huge percent, so, but yeah, 379, and it's a great way to discuss your property value. It's not, you know, it's just a great way to talk to somebody who was involved in the, in the process.
Absolutely. And as far as the other tax relief and exemptions that folks might be eligible for, I guess from your office, not just related to this process, but on an, on an annual basis, what kind of outreach do you do to the community to make sure that folks are aware that those options might be available?
Absolutely, I, last year, right at the start of the filing period for the homeowner's exemption, tax relief, I actually was over at the senior center, and I did a little presentation, we had a little sit-down. I just sat there, answered questions, talked them through the process, told them what, you know, what was available to them. Veterans too, I mean, they were asking all sorts of questions about, about those exemptions. But I would certainly be willing to also just do a night where, you know, I can do something for the taxpayers to come in and just ask questions about exemptions as well here. That way, it's, it's, because it's really important, that outreach. And I found every time I go over to the senior center and I just sit at a table or talk to them, it's, it's always a fun time, and they learn so much and have so many questions.
That's great, thank you so much.
Counselor, Deputy Marata.
Yes, thank you, all three of you. This is, this is amazing. To be able to see what you can see and, and how you can do a really deep dive, which I guess some of you are going to do over the weekend. You know, or just find, you know, more basic information, and it just, I think once people start looking at it and realize it's not a big scary thing, it seems to be pretty, not only interactive, but also intuitive. I'm, a couple of things. Besides you being here tonight, I'm trying to think of other ways that we can get this information out, that there is this, this website, that this is, that this is available. And that people can actually come back to you, I would assume if they have any further questions. Um, this is just tremendous data and a tremendous resource, so thank you for all that hard work. I, I do baby data. This is light years ahead and, and it's really wonderful. I have one quick question, which might be really, really simple and I'm just not getting it. But when you talk about vacant land, you've um, divided it between residential and commercial. How do we make that distinction?
Um, a lot of it has to do with the zoning, um, zoning in the area, right? You can't have a residential parcel of vacant land in, on the Berlin Turnpike, right? In certain places on the Berlin Turnpike. So a lot of how vacant land is decided as to what use it has comes from the zoning.
Okay, which would include open space parks, that, that's what as well. Okay, thank you very much, thanks to all three of you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Uh, Counselor DeHass.
Thank you guys for coming. I'm gonna cross, cross-reference a couple of the data points because I know everybody has a fairly large increase, but condos have really gone up. And actually, the twenty-twenty-five market value for the condos is one hundred four point five percent of the twenty-twenty-four residential values. So that's huge, do you know what factors really drove the increase in condos to that extent?
Having been in the office and doing the sales, like so every week we put our sales into the system. Um, we have watched, and it's a constant place of conversation, what condo sales have been doing in the last three years. Uh, condos are selling hot, that condo market is very, very high. Um, and we knew kind of going in that we were going to see an increase in the condominiums like that, because sales, the sales data is just driving those market values up.
Is that like the economics of supply and demand, or is that just?
I was just gonna say, one of the things that you could talk about is also that they're much more affordable. Because the, the condo value was two hundred and something thousand, where the residuals are three hundred and something thousand. So, and again, percentages are misleading when you're going from a hundred to two hundred, or from a hundred and fifty to, you know, three hundred, it's not the same percentage as.
Yeah.
Even though the percentages are a little higher, the values are still lower on condos and they're very affordable for the current market situation that we're in.
Okay.
But is, is it, is it fair, I mean, just to expand on Kelly's question, is, is it fair to say, and I think this is true across the country, that you're seeing entry, traditional entry level houses are appreciating faster than the larger sort of McMansion style as sort of younger families try to get a kind of foothold in the property ladder?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, so that's an interesting kind of nuance within that residential kind of sector, I think.
Right, and then in that, it is kind of a supply and demand because, I mean, there's only so many condominiums and with that affordability that they have, it's, it's, you, you see condos go on the market and two days later, it's a cash sale.
Yeah.
And they're gone, it's, 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 it's probably never been seen before, but Larry's had a lot of, of experience in in uh, revaluations for a long time, and I don't think he's even ever seen anything like it.
Interesting, thank you.
Counselor Drago.
Yeah, I'm kind of overwhelmed. To those, to, you know, all three of you, um, thank you, I just have a few questions. Kind of referring to what Deputy Mayor Rado was saying, the vacant land, that doesn't include the parks, does it?
No, those are exempt, I didn't include those in the, but they did. I mean, we do have value increases even on exempt properties, they're assessed the same exact way every other property is.
The kind of Newington property is not included in that.
No, I did not.
In terms of how far back, you, you, when you talk about recently sold properties, did you say from ten twenty-three to ten twenty?
I, we used uh, going back to January first, twenty twenty-four.
How does that work in terms of, um, if there's a low inventory of houses, which apparently is, is what Newington has? So if there's not a lot of sales, I mean.
If there's not a lot of sales data, um, there will be, that's why we use other methods, like the cost approach. So the cost approach, you would, you know, use what the replacement cost is to build that house today, remove the, you know, remove the land value from that and you have the value of just the house. It's, it's a, or you would include, then add the land value back in and get the hundred percent value for the entire parcel.
It was an adjustment for that.
Yeah.
Then, just one, one more. You know, this is nothing, and I'm glad that you explained, this is nothing that the town council says, hey, let's go out and do this. Be like a money grab, because I've seen that term on Facebook.
It's not at all.
Right. But we kind of got, um, because of where our point in time is, you know, for the every five years, it's it's very, it's, it's a point in time dependency, because when the housing market is low, if we had been like maybe, you know, four years ago, or who knows, I understand that, they say that the housing market um, is going down in a couple of years, we would, it would, the results would be very, very different, so it just happens to be a point in time. This is a very high housing market, so everybody got screwed.
Right, and it, it, they used to have a longer period of time in between revaluations. And that was
The problem.
A problem, and so that's why the state went to a five-year schedule for revals. Um, I believe it was two thousand fourteen into fifteen revaluation, there was a decrease.
Remember, yeah.
It was a decrease, so it, it does happen and it, you know, so it, it's a, something that can happen. Because the market is going to change within the next five years.
But we're always on the same schedule now as a town.
Yes, we will always be on the five, same five-year schedule.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Counselor Capella.
Yes, um, thank you, thank you for the presentation and coming here and explaining it in detail. Um, you, Gail, Counselor Gail just kind of touched base on the question that I was gonna ask. Um, I know that a few of my neighbors pretty much freaked out when they opened up there, like everyone else did. Um, they calculated that they're, they might have to pay an extra four thousand dollars in taxes, and quite honestly, I don't think she could afford it. So she was, you know, trying to see what she could do. But anyway, um, let's say in two years, the market changes, is it something where a resident can go back and reassess and?
No, we're on the five-year schedule.
Okay.
But I, I, I think it's also, I mean, to Nancy's question, I think, and this is largely, I field a lot of calls every day about people, and as does Danielle, as does Larry. Um, and you know, one of the, the key points that you have to make is that this is not a tax bill. There's two basic pieces to calculation in tax bill, there's your appraisal, and there's your, your assessment, and then there's the mill rate. And generally speaking, and obviously, you know, during the budget process, we're gonna be talking a lot about what the mill rate should be. But generally speaking, if assessments go way up, theoretically, the mill rate will fall. And similarly, if assessments fall in, say, four years from now or five years from now, there's a market correction. And all of a sudden, all of our, we all lose ten percent of the value of our houses. Well, that would then in, in turn cause probably the upward pressure on mill rate. So it's that balancing act, just because your appraisal went up doesn't necessarily mean your taxes will go up.
Yeah, you almost have to think of it like if the, if, so, and I had a, a slide on this back in the spring. Um, so if the budget remained exactly the same, essentially, even with the the assessments going up, your tax bill would be the same exact as it was July twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gonzalez.
I just wanted for the public to ask, how can they um, get this, it's where is this information?
I have, there's a link right on the assessor's website.
So they go to the assessor's website and they can find this information?
Yeah, and then we also did a newsflash, and that link is right in the newsflash as well, so.
Okay.
Same with the video on how to schedule your formal hearing.
It's good information.
I just have one last technical question and you guys can get on out of here. Um, just curi-, curiosity, how um, you mentioned like replacement costs of a home, how are replacement costs compared to market values these days? Is there, I know typically replacement costs depending on the market can be lower or higher depending on the market, but where are we at these days?
It's the same.
Part, part of it, we use some standardized um, national publications, as well as if you have a brand-new house.
Sure.
You get the building permit for four hundred thousand dollars, well, and you work backwards from there.
Yeah.
And then you start with your depreciation based on the age and condition of the, of the existing houses.
Sure, okay, very good.
And you could still derive a lot of information from the market.
Right.
It doesn't have to be the exact same house, right? But you can derive the cost of a garage from the sale of one house versus the sale of another house that maybe doesn't have a garage, so.
Right.
And a lot of that is the model building that we talked about too, in the sales comparison.
Thank you guys so much for being here, really appreciate all your work and your continued work on this. Hope you guys have a nice break on Thanksgiving and don't have to think about numbers for a little bit.
Thank you guys so much, really great information.
All right, moving right along. Uh, next, we are up to public participation. Um, if you are in the room and would like to speak in public participation, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. You have four minutes to speak. If you are on Zoom, please use the raise hand function in Zoom and we will alternate between in the room and over Zoom.
Hi, uh, I'm Jacob Nolton, I live on ten Hillside Street. I'm here for another reason later on, so I'll uh, wait to speak on that on the second uh, public participation part. But um, I wanted uh, uh, to speak to Counselor DeHass's question really quickly, hopefully helping out a bit. I uh, am a land use planner um, by profession. Uh, and I work with regional data, so take it with a grain of salt. But another reason why condos and um, smaller units like that are so hot in the market is because we're seeing a decrease in family size as well, we need less space. Uh, single parents are up and up, uh, meaning divorce rates are up and up as well. Um, and we're just seeing um, those units being bought out, especially if you're a single parent on the market. You can't necessarily always afford um, the larger single-family homes. And that's why we're also um, looking to build kind of more of those units um, across the nation, uh, but also regionally. So just wanted to say that and uh, hopefully that answers a little bit of that supply or demand issue. Thank you.
Good evening, John Szazarski, Forty Grand Drive. Congratulations to all the council, the new counselors and the ones that got re-elected. That's amazing, I don't know if to offer congratulations or condolences, but I had, somebody had talked to me once about maybe running for council and I went home to see my wife, she said, don't do it, you'd be miserable, so. But it's only because she knows me. I just think they did an amazing job. You know, and Matt, I'm a little bit ahead of you, a week ago, I got on the website and found this cool data, I didn't know it was there, I kept on doing all the links, so I found all this cool data. Um, I think what would be really cool if in that data, they could also put the Zillow market price, I, I don't know if they can because it's proprietary, but I looked at a bunch of the properties, including mine, some of my neighbors, and it was very close to zero. So it made me feel fairly comfortable that the market value was okay. I think we really need though, the stress, the exemptions that people can get. You know, I, I work over, do uh, taxes for ARP, the senior center, and everybody we talk to either knows about it or we tell them about it. Because the big thing they want there is they need their ten forty form because there's income limitation, right? So they're all excited to get their ten forty so they can bring it over here and get their exemption. I think the thing that's, has been mentioned though, is that assessments go up, mill rate comes down, overall, that's true. The problem we have this time though, is the fact that residential property has gone up so much more than commercial. And motor vehicles probably aren't going to go up very much, even though our mill rate is going to be under the cap, the state cap, which will help us a little bit, but I'm guessing the average homeowner is going to go up like seven percent before you do anything on the budget. An average, average condo is going to go up like fourteen percent. So, yeah, I'd say, please be kind on the budget when you do it. Because we're already going to get a pretty big increase, it's not the fifty percent that people maybe thinking about, but, you know, it's still gonna be, could be fairly substantial. I guess the other thing I just wanted to talk about a little bit too, is you're talking about the center development plan. Um, I think it's, I first looked at it, I said, that's kind of cool. And I said, oh, this is, this is Weha South, which I'm not sure we want to be Weha. Um, be kind of cool if we could get there, but I think, I think we missed something, especially on the seniors. You know, seniors want to stay here, age in place, but it's got to be affordable. You know, that plan shows twelve hundred square foot, the fifteen hundred square foot townhouses, three hundred dollars a square foot, that's three sixty to four fifty. Not a lot of our seniors are going to hang around. You know, I think we got to look at something different. You know, I was over in New Zealand last year, and they do all these low, small houses. It's incredible, it's like six hundred square feet, you have two bedrooms, a kitchen, everything you need. I thought about it too, I live in an eighteen hundred square foot house, I added up the square foot that we use, like ninety percent of the time, it's like eight hundred, nine hundred square feet. You know, we just have this vision, we got to have this huge house, we got to have stainless steel appliances, we got to have granite, blah, blah, blah. We, I think if we get to that point, we got to do something different there to help our seniors. Bar is helping us with the budget, it's a couple of other things on the agenda tonight, new business. Do we really need an animal shelter, can we use Berlin? You know, it's only showed two options here, I don't know if we have to have our own. What was the other thing, there's one other thing that we're good about, I don't know, maybe my wife will come up and talk about it.
Thank you.
My name is Andre Andreas and I'm at seventy-six Vincent Drive, and I want to thank you for being here tonight. But I'm, want to talk to you about something I'm deeply concerned about, which is the new housing bill HB eight zero zero two, and what that means for our town. This bill is being promoted as an affordable housing solution, which it forces all one hundred and sixty-nine towns in Connecticut to meet a standard, excuse me, state mandated, mandated quota of economic diversity. But really, it's an extreme government overreach as it relinquishes local authority to the state of Connecticut. Under this law, up to twenty percent of a town's housing stock must be set aside as affordable rental units. This is not a modest zoning adjustment, this is a sweeping mandate that disrupts the town's ability to be strategic with zoning. It also places a burden on the taxpayer, the brunt of that on single-family homes. There will be an ever-increasing need for town services, school enrollment is going to go up, school expansion, the need for police, fire, EMS, something as simple as trash pickup, and other infrastructures such as sewers, water lines, traffic, wear and tear in our roads. Just today, I'm a few, my taxes are already borderline not sustainable. This bill even facilitates homelessness, which could lead to an increase of quality life crimes, crimes, such as panhandling, theft, open drug use, prostitution, and more. And there's actually been studies, um, when it comes to quality of life crimes, when people view quality of life crimes, it has a larger negative impact on them than other violent crimes. Many agree that homelessness is a mental health issue. This bill affirms unpredictable behaviors such as, we saw in the news recently when an eighty-one-year-old woman was walking home from church and was attacked by a homeless man. Other states have taken an approach to, to a balanced housing strategic, uh, strategy. Yet Connecticut's approach is radicalized, is a radicalized mandate. I should mention that both our state reps Gary Turco and Matt Lesser, who are both Democrat, pulled an ide-, uh, ideologue move and to no surprise, voted yes for HB eight zero zero two. As I sit in front of the town council, I want to reiterate that this bill will render you helpless. No matter what your input is, it will be ignored. Much like when I email many of you with my concerns about the town, it's ignored. So in other words, back to this bill, if the state doesn't think we built enough, developers will be able to bypass loco zoning. I want to be clear, the need for more affordable housing is real. However, we should be focused on, focusing on providing the means for individuals to gain prosperity so they can afford to live in certain areas. This bill imposes a one-size-fits-all solution that undermines local decision-making, threatens the public's, public safety, shifts an enormous cost onto the resident, and is basically allowing an influx of residents overnight. I urge our town council to speak out publicly and formally against this mandate, to join with other municipalities and to advocate for housing solutions that address affordability without destroying our local anatomy of, or, and, or, or overburdening taxpayers. And I want to thank you for your time and to your, for your service to this community.
One online. Ms. Lyons, I believe that is you, go right ahead.
Hi, Rose Lyons, forty-six Elton Drive. Unfortunately, I didn't get to watch the presentation that was given, but I have been researching since I received my uh, latest assessment, and I am going to re-watch it. But just my own opinion as someone who has only since two thousand, after my mom passed away, been paying tax. only since 2000, after my mom passed away, been paying taxes, I've been paying attention more to the rise in the taxes and I have successfully appealed three years or every, since 2005, 2011, 15 and 20 my assessment. And this latest assessment is a large leap. It was an increase of $89,540. But when I looked back at the previous years, it was pretty flat. In 2011, it was 164. I got it down to 146. In 2015, it was 150. I got it down to 145. And in 2020, it went up to 158 and I got it down to 146. So for the last 10, 15 years, it stayed around the 145 range. When I went from 146, 860 to 235, 900, I looked at it and having gone through the process and researched in the past and watching the sales prices in my neighborhood, I think we're finally back to where the real market values of these houses are being shown. When a house on my street goes on the market for 366 and sells for 455, you know, there's a big discrepancy. These houses are old houses. My father built this house in 1948. The house that sold was born in, or before, excuse me, built in 1947. Now that being said, many of these houses on my street have had their whole insides gutted, revamped. Mine is still in the sixties and the seventies inside. I keep the outside up. I keep the neighborhood looking good, but whether I'm going to appeal this or not, I'm not sure. It probably is a fair value. People would probably jump tomorrow if I put my house on the market for 230 as is, do as you want to do, but I thank you for making this presentation because I think there's a lot of misinformation and misconceptions as to how this all was brought about. I don't think anybody complained when they were selling for 50, 60, $70,000 over what the house was the assessment value, but again, I appreciate the transparency with this and I hope that people will not get all riled up until they actually look at the data that you're presenting. The other thing I'd like to say is I totally agree with John Slazarsky. I and many of my, many of people my age are living in single family homes that would love to get out, but can't get out because there's not any affordable housing for seniors. And I guess that's about it. And welcome to the, to the new members. One of these days, probably in the spring, I'll get up to meet you all. I don't drive at night, but thank you all. And if I don't get to the end of the meeting through all the whole routine here, I just want to say have a happy and healthy Thanksgiving.
We have one more on Zoom and we'll get to you after this next person.
Okay. Hi, Gail Slazarsky, 40 Grandview Drive. I just wanted to talk a minute or two about the animal shelter. Up until tonight's agenda, I wasn't even aware that it existed or that we had an animal shelter in Newington. So I drove down that path today and visited the building myself and talked to the woman at the front desk. And I read the part in the agenda, but I also looked at the Connecticut state statutes. And the proposal, the way I see it for the town is to purchase the property and open up our own shelter. But I might be misunderstanding or maybe finding another purchaser and have them do it. But I also wanted to read from what I found in the Connecticut state statue. And if as soon as I can get my phone open here, I can tell you the statue number. I'm sorry for the delay here. For some reason, I'm not getting it, but there's a statue that says that each town has to provide an animal shelter unless you've, unless you use, and I'm paraphrasing from memory, unless you use a local one shared with somebody else. So I'm wondering if the town has pursued that option and why are we spending the money? It may not be a lot of money in the grand scheme of things. I don't really know what the budget amount is, but we have so many people that need money. And that I just have a concern about this process. The other thing I want to say is I I am very appreciative of the Department of Transportation, people who've been coming around to collect leaves. They're very efficient. They're very pleasant and we, I had a circumstance the other day where I was backing my car out when the truck was coming and sucking up the leaves and he was, he waited for me. He waved me on, you know, he, he was very, very nice. And I just think that that the men, I guess it's mostly men, but the people who do that job are doing a great job for the town and, and I just wanted to say thank you. And also welcome to all the counselors and we look forward to all your hard work and all your attention to our, our needs in the upcoming year. So thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. Leaf guys have done a great job. We do have one more over Zoom. Justin, you are up. Go right ahead. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Justin. My address is 225 Culver Street, Newington, Connecticut. I just, there were two topics since I logged on. I was able to see a good portion of the presentation for the new tech that's available to assess the value of land or the value of your home. And I'm not so much speaking to the actual tech, but more so to you know, how do we get residents to engage with it? And I think the, Matthew may have asked a question, asked how many people were using it, or that could have been something else, but I think it had to do with this. And one of the things that I find with, you know, not just the city's website, but in general, even using the state of Connecticut's website. I was on the IRS website the other day, or even I was looking up some prayers for a friend on the Vatican's website. And they're not user friendly. You know, in addition to that, a lot of times it feels very bureaucratic. And so I think we have, there's an opportunity to kind of look at it as, you know, how can we market this new technology to our constituents? So, you know, I think that the way that things are generally put up, they're on the website. They end up being like a PDF or a link to another link. And they kind of just die quietly. So I think if we use, if we look at this like it's a product that we're launching or that's being launched and put some interesting like fun marketing behind it, that could be great. Sort of treat it, you know, people don't really care, at least from my point of view. You know, about the new technology, what they care about is what it can do for them and how it makes their lives easier. So I think utilizing the power of narrative, you know, is probably, you know, going to be beneficial. Oftentimes I know that we have spoken about our senior population, you know, my father, for example, I mean, he looks like he's maybe in his 50s or early 60s, but he's pushing 80 and he can't even use his iPhone, which is, you know, is super simple to use. So when you think about that, I think using the power of narrative, showing people using it and then also utilizing some of our associations or community groups, nonprofits, maybe like an SMS text to, you know, to residents or like a citywide email blast with a super simple subject line. You know, and then maybe like some micro demos. So what is the benefit? And then the second piece of what I wanted to talk about was a gentleman raised some concerns about the affordable housing. You know, I, I was doing some research and actually the number one driver of homelessness in the state of Connecticut is affordability. And, you know, as someone who has worked in the recovery space, you know, helping people who suffer from mental health disorders, either driven by, you know, PTSD or addiction or, you know, a million other things. Often, you know, we have to look at homelessness differently. You know, you can be at Price Chopper and someone is shopping for food, but they actually have no home. And homelessness doesn't necessarily look the way we think it does. You know, you can be couch surfing or living from place to place to place and have no place to call home. You know, one of the big drivers for being homeless nowadays is the unaffordability and wages have stagnated. The price of living has gone through the roof. And, you know, you can work a full-time job plus overtime.
Sorry, sir. I don't, I don't mean to cut you off. You're beyond your four minute timeframe. Could you please summarize and wrap up?
Yeah, but I just think that being, looking at affordable housing and so on, the way we look at that, I feel like it's, it's just beneficial to the community. I get the concerns, but I think it's a good move. So yeah, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the room or over Zoom that would like to speak as part of other participation? One once. All right. Seeing none, we will move on. We didn't get any email correspondence, I believe. No. All right. We will move along to remarks by counselors on public participation. I just want to jump in real quick first and address, I know some questions about the, about the animal shelter. I don't want to get ahead of you, John, but I suspect that you're going to explain how we got to this point and when we get into that a little bit.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good because we did, we did look at a lot of different options to get to this point. So I think it's, it's good to, please stick around. Counselor Neves.
I've heard the commentaries from the public and I think something that keeps coming up is the affordability issue. I think it's pretty prevalent, I think, in many communities and even here in Newington. Prices of homes have got to come down, just housing in general for individuals across the board. We, we have to figure out some solutions and bringing the price of whether it's rentals, whether it's condos, whether it's homes. I think it just, it really hits home for an awful lot of individuals. I've also heard the concern about the shelters for animals. That is a cost. Something that we also need to think about. I understand that the location that we do utilize here in Newington, there's an interest in selling the, the location. And so that's something that our town needs to, you know, talk about, look at what the options are.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Pluck.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just say a couple of things. First on the point about the website that I think the last speaker made, this is a good opportunity now as folks are going to find these new great resources on the assessor's website. To remind you that we have a new website and that website is, is, is very new, which means that there are unsure things that could change about it still. So if you run into concerns or questions or would like changes to that website to make it more user friendly, please reach out to us and reach out to the town manager's office. Sharing those concerns because it is still, you know, work in progress and things can always change. And I'll just make a very brief point on the thing folks raised about senior housing, particularly in the town center. I just want to remind folks that the town center master plan is a vision based on the community's vision brought to bear over the course of many months, but it is not a plan. It may not even be the exact goal of this council or the zoning commission or others to to the T initiate and implement that precise plan. What it does give us is a clear idea of what the community wanted in that area. And so I just want to say, I know the folks that raised this know this, but for those folks maybe listening online or listening back, that nothing's happened yet. The opportunity for things like senior housing and a whole range of other things are still there and it's something that, you know, we're all committed to moving forward with. So that's it.
Thank you, counselor. Any other remarks from council? All right. We will move on to old business. Item A, amendment to overnight parking ordinance. We talked about this two meetings ago. We sort of introduced the topic.
Yeah, I mean, and so I, I think there, there was a request from council at the October 28th meeting for a little bit more data about frequency of storms. And at the second page of the memo, I summarized that for you. Obviously, January, February, no great surprise. That's the, those are the highest amount of snowfall over the last 17 years, but actually December is quite a bit as well. But clearly over the last a decade or so, I mean, it goes ebbs and flows a little bit. Clearly there's a downward trend in the, the total volume of snowfall that we're getting in inches. So, you know, to the extent to which you guys want to make a amendment to this ordinance, I think maybe your first step would be to just limit that the window of time where on-street parking is permitted from just January and February. See how that goes for a couple of winter cycles. If there's still concerns from the community, you know, then we could, we could, we could, we could eliminate that, that, that ordinance altogether. But this is a nice sort of like, let's try it and see how it goes for a couple of winters. I would just say practically speaking, because we're already, you know, late November now, we still would have to advertise for a hearing, have a hearing. Realistically, wouldn't be able to pass an ordinance amendment until January anyways, so it's really not going to take effect until, till March. But, you know, gets the ball rolling.
I actually had a question in regards to that. If it's January, is there maybe, if we, if we approve this in January, can we do it retroactive or at least have the police like put a moratorium on this until we approve this or not? Or is this something that'll be approved basically for next winter?
Well, I mean, you, you could. So I mean, if you, because so my idea is that if you're okay with it, it's in its current form, then next meeting I would formally introduce it and then we we'd schedule a public hearing for, for what that first meeting in, in January. So it, it, it would take effect and like the cops would enforce it in January and February.
Right. No. So that's, so but my question is like, so as of today, our ordinance began November.
Oh, you mean do like a informal.
Yeah. So like while we're discussing this right now, if somebody parks on the street, I don't want to get a ticket.
I, I, I'm wary of doing that just because it's an ordinance and, you know, asking, I mean, I think that there, there's a little bit at the margins. I think the, the police have a little bit of discretion about how they enforce it because it's the real world and everybody's circumstances are differently, but I, to actually a full blown moratorium, I feel like that might be a step too far, you know, taking away a little bit too much authority, but but certainly I, I think certainly, you know, informal conversations can, can, can occur on that.
And what if we ultimately decide to change the ordinance, it could be still effective right now. So for this year.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. So it would, it would, it would become effective once that council actually proves that, which would presumably be in, in January, when it would be outlawed and it would be prohibited anyways. So it wouldn't be until March 1st.
Okay.
That it would essentially, you'd be able to park on the street overnight.
So, but that was my question. So effective March 1st, 2026, people could park on the street.
Correct, correct.
Baby steps. There you go. Counselor Jacob.
Can I make, do I have a question? Okay. As long, I mean, and I, I think you addressed this earlier, but I just want to make sure people know that the highway department and the chief of police are have no opposition to this change.
They are, I, I don't think, I don't think they have strong, I think it's fair to say, and I'm, I'm very reluctant to, to speak in behalf of the police chief in particular, but also Rob Hillman or Highway Superintendent. I don't think they have strong opposition to it. I think, I think they're sort of 50 50. I think they view it as a policy decision of, of, of council. They see the good, they see the bad, the pros and cons, but I don't think they have black and white kind of feelings about it.
For the public community though, can we, I'd be curious to hear what the cons are from their perspective.
Well, the cons are obviously just sort of public pushback in that it's a sort of becomes a, you know, it's the real world and people have, you know, whether it's grandparents living with them for the winter and they have small driveways and, you know, putting people in a difficult situation when they have no intention of actually blocking, blocking roads during, during snowstorms. They're just simply parking their car on the street overnight. So that, that's what it is. I would sort of think of it as sort of like a personal freedom would be the, the con of it.
No, I mean, why, why the police might not be in favor of shortening the, or why the highway department might not be in favor of shortening the duration?
Because any, any cars parked on the street overnight during, any cars parked on the street when there's a snowstorm will negatively impact highway's department's ability to plow the roads. However, the second, the provision in that parking ordinance after the, the ban on overnight parking between November and, and March that we're looking to amend, the next one says thou shall not park on the street at the be during a storm or in the eight hours after it. So it's sort of a belt and suspenders approach, meaning that there's already a mechanism in place to So it's sort of a belt and suspenders approach, meaning that there's already a mechanism in place to uh, ticket and/or if necessary tow vehicles that are going to be impeding the, the path of the plows. So this is by having that overnight parking ordinance, in addition to the prohibition of parking on the street during snowstorm, during and after snowstorms, it's, it's just sort of this second layer approach that may be unnecessary. So that's why I think, Gail, though, to your point is like, let's baby steps, let's see if this works. If people are all of a sudden just sort of flouting it and still parking on the street during snowstorms and because they're not getting the message about, about this, then maybe we have to go back and to the original. But let's, let's give this, I think the idea is let's give this a try for a couple of winters. If it's, if it's not working from an operation standpoint, and if we go back, if it is a success and there's no issues, then maybe we could get rid of it altogether.
Um, in the ordinance itself, I'm just, this is just semantics, I'm sure, but it says like, you know, no motor vehicle shall be left parked on any public highway during any snowfall or at any time during a period of eight hours after the, after the end of the snowfall. Don't we sometimes put a prohibition before the snowfall?
No, I believe it's only, it's only like at the, the time the first flakes uh, fall. I, I could, I could be wrong about you, Scott, am I correct on that? That we never would, we would never.
If you know a big blizzard is coming though, don't you sometimes say, you know, we're going to prohibit parking on the street from, if, if it's supposed to be overnight, use from six o'clock onwards, just in, in preparation? So I, I think the wording.
Sorry, there's some, some talking in the middle of the audience? Guys, I'm starting having trouble concentrating. So Scott, I'm sorry, I didn't quite get that.
If you know a blizzard is going to start, eight, we have to.
Okay, from time to time.
So if, if maybe just the wording can see, you know, or um, or prior, if, if, if announced, you know, or, or, you know, it appears after the end, end of any snowfall or prior to the snowstorm, if, if an emergency announcement comes out or something.
Well, but I, 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 I want to talk to the chief about this because I don't know the authority under which the police would be ticketing in advance right now. So, so I, I, I need guidance from the police chief.
Okay, yeah, but, but I, I, again, if you can bring that up, because I, there are instances where we're prohibiting parking before the start of a storm, knowing that a big blizzard is coming. So it's just, I just want to make it clear in here that.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure, absolutely.
And then um, one other thing is um, in terms of the emergency, uh, i- is there a way we can just put in here, um, you know, what do you call it when you, when you put out an emergency announcement?
An emergency announcement, set up e-blast or?
Yeah, emergency storm announcements um, will be communicated to the public, you know, at a minimum via the town web, you know, just how, how it will be communicated to the public, you know, at a minimum. Yeah.
But then that would, okay, so that would put the town liable for not sending out. If there was a, if there was a power outage or there were problems, it would make the town liable for not. And then so people could appeal their, their parking tickets for, because we didn't follow a procedure that may not be practical to, to actually do. I think, I think that, I'm happy to talk about this more, um, but I mean, there's, if, if, if we get too prescriptive in the ordinance, it puts us, it, it undermines our authority of doing it.
I, because I did get a couple of questions from people, because I said, well, you know, we're still going to have the, the ability, you know, during a storm, if it's like, you know, December or November, whatever, to put in an emergency um, parking ban.
Yeah.
And they said, well, how are you going to notify us of that? And wouldn't something like that automatically be?
Yeah, well, the town, we, the, the police department uses all available resources to communicate the parking ban. That would include not be, not limited to everything from email blast to uh, to, to, I believe, Atlas One notification um, and, and everything in between. But as far as putting onus on us, so then putting the onus on the town and then it would, I'm happy to have this conversation more with you, but you can see how, how it, how it, how it would undermine our authority if we're not following these processes, the letter of the law, that may not be practical in, in, in the circumstances.
But at the same rate, if you ticket somebody and they're saying, well, I never knew about it, nobody ever told me, you know, for an emergency. If you could just have that conversation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Deputy Mayor Rada.
Yeah, two things. Um, one, um, which is along the same line or in response to Counselor uh, Budreko was um, I've noticed when we've had storms or impending storms that um, the three major television stations, uh, towns can call in and his parking ban, I mean, that could be something else that we could consider. The only other thing, and, and this may seem nitpicky, uh, is the use of the word highway. And I think we have an opportunity to make this as clear as possible. And some people may think of highway.
So again, this is all defined in, in the ordinance, under definitions what a public highway is. But as a practical speaking, when you get a ticket, it's not going to, it's not going to say public highway and people are going to be confused about that. It's simply going to say overnight parking violation, period.
Right, all, all I'm suggesting is that we think about changing highway to roadway.
Okay, so then that would help trigger us to have to revise, like, large-scale revisions of that.
All right, okay, I see what you're saying.
I mean, we can do it, there's no reason we can't. I'm just saying that creates a much larger amendment than, than what we're sort of being proposed here. But I mean, I'm, I'm, again, I'm happy, I'm happy to go down that road.
So your thought, the process was that we wouldn't take action, we're not taking action on this tonight, we'll have another meeting.
We will have another meeting so that you can introduce the bill, the ordinance, and then schedule a couple.
If it's possible, maybe we could get someone from PD or Highway or both there and just so in case other questions come on.
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah, so this is staying on the agenda, we have no action on this.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from counsel on that? Thank you, John. All right, moving on to item B, use of proceeds from Bundy Road stub sale. Say that three times back.
Yeah.
All right, Counselor Plod, would you please read the resolution?
Certainly. Resolve that the Newington Town Council hereby authorizes that the proceeds from the sale of the former Bundy Road stub located between 36 and 50 Bundy Road or $44,980 net of legal and closing costs be deposited into the town's land acquisition fund.
Second.
Second by Counselor Budreko.
Sure.
Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposer abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Counselor Budreko. Really.
Moving on to item C, acceptance of final town master plan. Deputy Mayor Rada, would you please read that resolution?
I'd be happy to. Resolve that the Newington Town Council hereby accepts the town center master plan as presented by Kimberly Baptiste of Colliers Engineering and Design to the Newington Town Council on October 28th, 2025, and directs town staff to take appropriate steps to implement the various, reports various findings. Be it further resolved that the Newington Town Council extends its heartfelt thanks to Ms. Baptiste and her team at Colliers, including Bridget Snowberg, as well as to the volunteer members of the steering committee, including Stanley Sobieski, Deanna Renee, Paul Muska, and Jim Wiltshire for their valuable insight and expertise.
Second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Rada, second by Counselor Gonzalez. Any discussion on this? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposer abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. I'll conclude old business for today. Moving on to item A, tax refunds. Counselor Neves, do you please read the resolution? Backwards, backwards.
Yes, right here.
The, that property tax refunds in the amount of $7,723.09 are hereby approved in the individual amounts and for those named on the request for refund of an overpayment of taxes certified by the revenue collector, a list of which is attached to this resolution.
Second. Motion by Counselor Neves, second by Counselor to the office. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposer abstaining? All right. Moving right along. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is minutes of previous meetings. Was it the 28th or the 11th? We don't have.
We don't have the, uh, the 11th, the reorganization meeting.
Okay, very good. So we do not have the minutes for the November 11th organizational meeting, so that is going to stay on the agenda. We are looking for any questions or concerns, any changes to the October 28th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Any changes that need to be made? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So, second.
Motion by Counselor Plod, second by Deputy Mayor Rada. Any discussion on approving the minutes from the October 28th, 2025 regular meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Includes. Minutes, we got few here to do under um, resignations and appointments. All right. First one on the list is uh, resignation of Kelly DeHaas from the Library Board of Trustees. Counselor Capella, would you please read that uh, resolution?
Sure, I am attaching a copy of resignation email received of resignation. Okay, um, that the Newington Town Council hereby accepts the resignation of Kelly DeHaas as a member of the Lucy Robbins Wells Library Board in accordance with the correspondence received on November 7th, 2025 and effective immediately.
Second.
Counselor Capella, second by Counselor Budreko. Any discussion on this? Counselor Piniakas.
I just want to say thanks for putting your time with the committee. I know they've been going out for a long time, so.
So any further discussion of counsel?
I guess just one thing, which is, is your name spelled incorrectly? Your last name?
It's okay.
Yeah, sorry, we, we may have gone over. But we'll get, it's all right.
There's emphasis there.
That's it.
Very good, very good. All right, no further discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously. Uh, next we have the resignation of Nancy Capello from the Board of Ethics. Counselor DeHaas, would you please read that resolution?
Resolve that the Newington Town Council hereby accepts the resignation of Nancy Capello as a member of the Board of Ethics in accordance with the correspondence received on November 5th, 2025 and effective immediately.
Second.
All right, motion by Counselor DeHaas, second by Counselor Budreko. Any discussion on this, Counselor Tiniakas?
Same thing.
All right, very good, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Cries unanimously. Moving right along, next we have resignation of Marissa Lindsey from the Economic Development Commission. Counselor Budreko, would you please actually read that, that, that resolution?
Resolve that the Newington Town Council hereby accepts the resignation of Marissa Lindsey as a member of the Economic Development Commission in accordance with correspondence received on November 5th, 2025 and effective immediately.
Second.
My Counselor Budreko, second by Counselor Ford. Any discussion on this? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously. If you move in here, next is the resignation of Robert Kane from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Counselor Gonzalez, would you please read the resolution?
Sure. Resolve that the Newington Town Council hereby accepts the resignation of Robert Kane as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals in accordance with the correspondence received on November 13th, 2025 and effective immediately.
Second.
All right, motion by Counselor Gonzalez, second by Counselor Ford. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Right, motion carries unanimously. And last on the list is resignation of Alan Nafis from the Town Planning and Zoning Commission. Counselor Tiniakas, please read that.
Resolve that the Newington Town Council hereby accepts the resignation of Alan Nafis as a member of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission in accordance with the correspondence received on November 19th, 2025 and effective immediately.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Tiniakas, second by Counselor Gonzalez. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries unanimously. Moving right along, all right, now we're up to item F, appointments, council liaison. Um, I'm going to turn this over to uh, Counselor Plod and Budreko.
Trade off. Resolve that the Newington Town Council hereby makes the following appointments. Anna Reynolds, Public Building Committee.
Kelly DeHaas, NTC member, 45 Lincoln Road, party Republican, NTC term.
Kim Rada, NTC member, address 128 Cambria Avenue, party D, term, NTC term.
Audit Committee, Kelly DeHaas, NTC member, 45 Lincoln Road, party R, NTC term.
AJ Tiniakos, and AT, NTC member, 129 Rosalia Avenue, party D, NTC term. And Hilda Neves, NTC member, 225 Culver Street, party D, term, NTC term.
Commission on Aging and Disabled, Kelly DeHaas, NTC member, 45 Lincoln Road, party R, NTC term.
AJ Tiniakos, NTC member, 129 Rosalia Avenue, party D, term, NTC term.
Conservation Inland Wetlands Commission, Gail Budreko, NTC member, 21 Isabel Terrace, party R, NTC term.
Kim Rada, NTC member, 128 Cambria Avenue, party D, term, NTC term.
Wolf Town Committee, Nancy Capello, NTC member, 66 Pepper Bush Lane, party R, NTC term.
AJ Tiniakos, NTC member, 129 Rosalia Avenue, party D, term, NTC term. Board of Education, Matt Plord, NTC member, 15 Woods Edge Drive, party D, term, NTC term.
Board of Fire Commissioners, Nancy Capello, NTC member, 65, I mean, 66 Duck Pepper Bush Lane, party R, NTC term.
Kim Rada, NTC member, 128 Cambria Avenue, party D, term, NTC term.
Fire Department Facilities Project Building Committee, Gail Budreko, NTC member, 21 Isabel Terrace, party R, NTC term.
Kim Rada, NTC member, 128 Cambria Avenue, party D, NTC term. Capital Region Council of Governments, Hilda Neves, 225 Culver Street, party D, term, NTC term. Human Rights Commission, Hilda Neves, 225 Culver Street, party D, term, NTC term.
Development Commission, Gail Budreko, NTC member, 21 Isabel Terrace, party R, NTC term.
Matt Plord, NTC member, 15 Woods Edge Drive, party D, term, NTC term.
Employee Insurance and Pension Benefits Committee, Kelly DeHaas, NTC member, 45 Lincoln Road, party R, NTC term.
AJ Tiniakos, NTC member, 129 Rosalia Avenue, party D, NTC term.
Environmental Quality Commission, Gail Budreko, NTC member, 21 Isabel Terrace, party R, NTC term.
Hilda Neves, NTC member, 225 Culver Street, party D, term, NTC term. Permanent Building Committee Ordinance Review Subcommittee, Kim Rada, NTC member, one, address 128 Cambria Avenue, party D, term, NTC term. Matt Plord, NTC member, 15 Woods Edge Drive, party D, term, NTC term.
Facilities Naming Subcommittee, Nancy Capello, NTC member, 66 Pepper Bush Lane, party R, NTC term.
Kim Rada, NTC member, 128 Cambria Avenue, party D, NTC term. Matt Plord, NTC member, 15 Woods Edge Drive, party D, term, NTC term.
Indian Hill Country Club Committee, Nancy Capello, NTC member, 66 Pepper Bush Lane, party R, NTC term.
Hilda Neves, NTC member, 225 Culver Street, party D, term, NTC term. Kathy Gonzalez, NTC member, 44 Basswood Street, party D, term, NTC term.
Joint Shared Services Committee, Kelly DeHaas, NTC member, 45 Lincoln Road, party R, NTC term.
Kathy Gonzalez, NTC member, 44 Basswood Street, party D, NTC term. Matt Plord, NTC member, 15 Woods Edge Drive, party D, term, NTC term.
John Wallace Middle School Project Building Committee, Kelly DeHaas, NTC member, 45 Lincoln Road, party R, NTC term.
Kim Rada, NTC member, 128 Cambria Avenue, party D, NTC term.
Library Board, Kelly DeHaas, NTC member, 45 Lincoln Road, party R, NTC term.
AJ Tiniakos, NTC member, 129 Rosalia Avenue, party D, NTC term.
Library Renovations Additions Public Building Committee, Kelly DeHaas, NTC member, 45 Lincoln Road, party R, NTC term.
AJ Tiniakos, NTC member, 129 Rosalia Avenue, party D, term, NTC term.
Town Pool Project Building Committee, Nancy Capello, NTC member, 66 Pepper Bush Lane, party R, NTC term.
AJ Tiniakos, NTC member, 129 Rosalia Avenue, party D, NTC term.
NCTV, Gail Budreko, NTC member, 21 Isabel Terrace, party R, NTC term.
Kathy Gonzalez, NTC member, 44 Basswood Street, party D, NTC term.
Newington Emergency Medical Services, Gail Budreko, NTC member, 21 Isabel Terrace, party R, NTC term.
Hilda Neves, NTC. Hilda Nieves, NTC member, two twenty-five Culver Street, party D, NTC term. Newington Housing Needs Study Committee, Kathy Gonzalez, NTC member, forty-four Basswood Street, party D, term, NTC term.
Open Space Committee, Gail Bedraco, NTC member, twenty-one Isabel Terrace, party R, NTC term.
Kathy Gonzalez, NTC member, forty-four Basswood Street, party D, term, NTC term.
Parks and Recreation Board, Nancy Capello, NTC member, sixty-six Pepper Bush Lane, party R, NTC term.
AJ Tiniakos, one twenty-nine Rosalia Avenue, party D, term, NTC term.
School Code Compliance Committee, Kelly DeHass, NTC member, forty-five Lincoln Road, party R, NTC term.
Kim Rada, NTC member, one twenty-eight Cambria Avenue, D, NTC term. Kathy Gonzalez, NTC member, forty-four Basswood Street, D, NTC term.
Standing Insurance Committee, Nancy Capello, NTC member, sixty-six Pepper Bush Lane, party R, NTC term.
AJ Tiniakos, NTC member, one twenty-nine Rosalia Avenue, party D, term, NTC term.
Town Manager Evaluation Subcommittee, Nancy Capello, NTC member, sixty-six Pepper Bush Lane, party R, NTC term.
And Kathy Gonzalez, NTC member, forty-four Basswood Street, D, NTC term. AJ Tiniakos, NTC member, one twenty-nine Rosalia Avenue, D, NTC term.
Town Planning and Zoning Commission, Gail Bedraco, NTC member, twenty-one Isabel Terrace, party R, NTC term.
Matt Plord, NTC member, fifteen Woods Edge Drive, D, NTC term.
Town Council Rules Procedure Subcommittee, Gail Bedraco, NTC member, twenty-one Isabel Terrace, party R, NTC term.
AJ Tiniakos, NTC member, one twenty-nine Rosalia Avenue, D, NTC term. Hilda Nieves, NTC member, two twenty-five Culver Street, D, NTC term.
Youth Adult Council, Nancy Capello, NTC member, sixty-six Pepper Bush Lane, party R, NTC term.
And Kathy Gonzalez, NTC member, forty-four Basswood Street, party D, term, NTC term.
So, great job. They had a motion by Counselors, uh, Plord and Bedraco, seconded by Counselor Tiniakas. Any discussion on these further? Any typos anyone saw or anything to correct? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? All right, team, motion carries unanimously. Give us your water. Yep, you guys are up again. Counselor Plord and Bedraco, please read the resolution.
Sure, resolve that the Newington Town Council hereby makes the following appointments. Board of Assessment Appeals, Kathleen Freeman, address eighty-seven Centerwood Road, party D, term, twelve-one twenty-five to six-three twenty-nine, reappointment. Central Connecticut Health District Board of Directors, Paula T. Siegel, member, eighteen-twenty-seven Main Street, party D, term, twelve-one twenty-five to six-three twenty-eight, reappointment. Commission on Aging and Disabled, Lillian Brabner, member, one sixty-five Cedar Ridge Road, party D, term, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-eight, reappointment. Conservation Inland Wetlands Commission, Keith Anderson, member, fifty-eight Theodore Street, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-nine, reappointment. Bernadette Conway, member, one seventy-seven Hartford Avenue, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-two nine, reappointment. Alan Paskowitz, member, one hundred Cambria Avenue, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-nine, reappointment. Development Commission, Robert Rio, member, fifteen Beacon Street, party D, term, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-eight, replaces Tiffany Hamgoivea. Employee Insurance and Pension Benefits Committee. Virginia Ramos Rios, member, forty-four Camp Drive, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-seven, reappointment. EMS Committee, William McCarthy, member, two oh-six Churchill Drive, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to twelve-thirty-one twenty-seven, reappointment. Environmental Quality Commission, Teresa Basset, member, forty-one Eleanor Drive, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to twelve-thirty-one twenty-two nine, reappointment. Jalen Peanut, one thirty-nine Candlewick Drive, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-nine, reappointment. Karen Sirioux, seventy-four Fox Run Court, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-nine, reappointment. Fair Rent Commission, Jonathan Gallagher, dwelling unit tenant, ninety-eight Payne Road Apartment thirteen-ten, party D, term, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-seven, reappointment. Karen Peterkin, elector, sixty-five Sterling Drive, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-seven, reappointment. Mark R. Hollis, dwelling unit landlord, three twenty-three Church Street, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-five, reappointment. That's not right, but we'll circle back on that.
I'm sorry.
That's, uh, Mark R. Hollis, his term. He has.
The, the date. The Fair Rent Commission.
We'll just suggest that. Joanne McCormick, alternate tenant, five Baldwin Court, party D, twelve-one twenty-five, will hold reappointment. Newington Historical Society and Trust, Teresa Basset, member, forty-one Eleanor Drive, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-eight, reappointment. Human Rights Commission, Jamela, Jamela Abrams, one thirty-five Brookside Road, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-eight, reappointment. Library Board, Pamela R. Kinnery, one-ten Partridge Drive, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-thirty-one, reappointment. Open Space Committee, Gia Giorgiette Pascarelli, member, sixty-two Wells Drive North, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-nine, reappointment. Parks and Recreation Board, Maya Colapi, member, eighty-seven Robbins Avenue, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-nine, replaces Phil de Blasio. Eileen Francolino, member, one sixteen Lydall Road, party D, twelve-one twenty-five, eleven-thirty twenty-two nine, reappointment. John Patz, member, two-eleven Hartford Avenue, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-nine, replaces Edward Marchionne. Austin Nol- Nolton. Nolan, member, one twenty-five Waverly Drive, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-two nine, replaces Donald F. Woods. Robert Kane, member, one fifty-five Brentwood Road, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-two nine, replaces Alan Nafis.
That's all right. Alan's on Parks and.
Yeah, that's not right. Okay. There's also a typo. You'll get that corrected, right? Town Planning and Zoning Commission, Robert Kane, member, one fifty-five Brentwood Road, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-six, replaces Alan Nafis. Gia Giorgiette Pascarelli, member, sixty-two Wells Drive North, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to twenty-two nine, reappointment. Stephen R. Woods, member, ninety-four New Britton Avenue, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-two nine, reappointment. Alexandra Rice Davis, alternate, twenty-one Elton Drive, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-nine, replaces Susan Walcomah. Vehicle Appeals Board, Jonathan Gallagher, member, ninety-eight Payne Road Apartment thirteen-ten, party D, term, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-seven, reappointment. And Zoning Board of Appeals, Michael Lucas, member, fifty Cherry Hill Drive, party D, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-six, replaces Robert Kane. Peter Kolikowski, member, thirty-six Sunrise Circle, party D, term, twelve-one twenty-five to eleven-thirty thirty, reappointment.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Ford, second by Counselor Gonzalez, uh, just a couple of things. The, um. Those dates for the Fair Rent.
I, I, I presume so, so let's go back and get that real quick.
That's what the others.
Yeah, so therefore, uh. Alternate doesn't say on that. So, but did you actually amend the motion, so it's at two thousand twenty-seven? We did, I didn't.
Okay, so just keep them there, I presume it's two thousand twenty-seven, and we'll just redo it next time. So we'll leave those ones off.
And then I'll, oh yeah, and then I'll.
That the Robert Kane and Alan Nafis.
And we'll do the redo that one too.
Okay, so we'll just, so that, so that will come off.
Yep.
Uh, one other thing, small thing, um, on Human Rights Commission, Jamela Abraham's got three L's in her name instead of two.
Instead of two.
So I'm fine with that amendment to, to correct the spelling of the name.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's just a scrimmer's error.
Are you okay with that?
Yes. I just want to be clear about the Parks and Rec Board. I don't, I don't know if you said this, but Robert Kane was not a appointment to Parks and Rec.
You know what, that, that was the, that, that, that vestige of that error, that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He is appointed to Town Planning and Zoning.
Which, which.
And replacing Alan.
Which you did do correctly.
Which we did do.
Yeah, so that's just, we don't have to update that because it's, it's, it's a move, it's a movement.
Okay, and we'll just strike the Robert Kane portion of that from the Parks and Rec. Spelling.
All right, so we had a motion with amendments, seconded with amendments, any further discussion on these, any questions or concerns?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstainer or opposed? Motion carries unanimously with amendments.
The first one back.
Resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby makes the following appointment. Board of Ethics. Um, Kristen Wagner, two seventeen Beacon Street, party R, term, twelve-one twenty, twenty-five to eleven-thirty twenty-two nine, replaces reappointment.
Second.
Counselor Bedraco, second by Counselor Ford, any discussion on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Carries unanimously.
Resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby makes the following appointment. Board of Ethics, name Rose Marie Sarubi Lyons, member, forty-six Elton Drive, party U, term immediate to eleven-thirty twenty-two eight, replaces de facto Robert Carroll.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Ford, any discussion on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Hold on. All right. Moving on to new business. Item A, establishment of a proposing body with statement of need for animal shelter.
Sure, so this is, I think, just picking up on what we've already discussed a little bit, but we also have discussed a couple of times in the past too. So the Chief Perry has, has given an update on some of the work we've done around the animal shelter. Um, we are required under state statute under Title twenty-three of Connecticut General Statutes to provide for the humane, uh, sheltering of, of dogs that are abandoned, mistreated, lost, et cetera. Um, we've been contracting with Connecticut Canine for, I think, like fifty-five years, something like that, on Maple Avenue. Uh, the, the owner of Connecticut Canine has indicated that she plans to put the property on the market as soon as possible. Um, as long as it's on the market and not under contract, we're free to stay there, so we have a little bit of time to get our act together, but obviously not much, particularly if there's an interested buyer. Now, what is going to happen to that property, I don't know. Obviously, the, you've ever been to Connecticut Canine, the facility is, is quite old. Uh, it's actually largely built in, in an existing wetland. Um, and it, it shows its age. Um, you know, zoning, it doesn't necessarily lend itself immediately to redevelopment, but obviously, you know, uh, there, there are ways to do that. Um, so we are in a, potentially in a position without, without access to an animal shelter in the coming months. Um, we have kicked the tires, as the, both the chief and I have collectively kicked the tires with some of our neighboring municipalities. I think Berlin was mentioned as one opportunity, they have a great little shelter, just a simple cinder block, you know, small cinder block construction facility. They also, um, house abandoned cats and, and exotics like snakes and things like that. Um, and, uh, you know, and they, they do brisk business, and they, actually, interestingly, they're, they're a smaller community than we are population-wise, but they have doubled the number of animals. And particularly during COVID, there was this increase in people adopting pets, and then also as a result of this unfortunate, unfortunate side effect of that was a lot of people abandoned their pets. Um, so there was this spike in the amount of space that was needed at the Berlin kennel. So now they have, according to their, the, the folks that work there, including their town manager, they have at any given time, they typically have two or three spare, um, uh, kennels with runs, with outdoor runs that, that we could use, they're being very, very generous in, in potentially working with us on, you know, short-term lease arrangement, but it's not a permanent solution. At any given time, we very likely have more than two or three dogs than you know. So there's, there's definitely, if we lose access to Connecticut Canine, we're going to be scrambling for a place to, you know, favor here or favor there, but we really need a long-term solution. So I think there is sort of two, and I'll talk about it next, the, the, the Chapman Avenue, the Chapman Street Fire Facility that we need to, to, to get the ball rolling on with the Permanent Municipal Building Committee, but the first order of business for the Permanent Municipal Building Committee will be uh, this figuring out what to do with the animal shelter. Now, there, the options are, you know, um, building something new on some existing land, something maybe even smaller than what Berlin has. Uh, or, you know, or potentially buying Connecticut Canine when it goes on the market. Um, might be a little pricey, um, and then, but there is about five hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements that we need to do to that site, just to bring it up to sort of modern standards. We don't necessarily have to do those all on day one, but, um, but what we do need is a permanent, uh, municipal building committee to, to take a look at that, figure out, make a recommendation for the best course of action sooner rather than later, and then, you know, once the plan's in place, obviously engage architects, you know, and eventually, you know, eventually get stuff ready to go out to, well, I don't think this will need to go out to referendum, but get things ready for, 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 for bed and, and, and go to construction phase. So if you read the Permanent Municipal Building, uh, Committee Ordinance that was just amended last year, there is a, a very detailed process for how you engage the PMBC to start work on the project. So, uh, there's sort of four main steps, and, uh, the first one is that the town council, in consultation with me, the manager, determines the need for a project and identifies a quote-unquote proposing body. So in this case, the proposing body obviously would be the police department. Typically, a proposing body is the department that would most benefit from this activity, so they'd be the, uh, the police department. So your first step would be to make, to appoint them as a proposing body. Your second step would be to, uh, for the proposing body to transmit a statement of need about, about the project to council. In order to expedite, and then there's two more steps after that, then you have to, once their council agrees there's a valid need for the project, then refer the project to the TPZ for an A twenty-four review. Um, it would, it would appoint two voting members as recommended by the proposing body to serve as voting members uh, on the PMBC for that project only, and it would formally charge the PMBC with oversight of the project. And finally, the, the PMBC would need to hold at least one joint meeting with council about the project. So what I'm proposing to do, just to speed this along, is to do steps one and two. Have council identify a proposing body and, uh, approve a statement of need in one fell swoop. So that could happen at the next meeting under Old Business on, on December ninth. Uh, my, so the, the proposing body would be the police department, and the proposed, um, statement of need would be pursuant to General, Connecticut General Statute, section twenty-two dash three twenty-seven, and at sequence, Newington must provide for the safe and humane sheltering of lost, abandoned, neglected, and cruelly treated dogs due to the impending sale of the town's existing animal shelter. The town has an urgent need to explore cost-effective options, including both renovation and new construction, which will allow the Newington Police Department to continue to plot, comply with state requirements. Um, so if, if council's agreeable to that, we can have that under Old Business next time and get the ball rolling, and then at the next meeting, we could also appoint those two voting members from the proposing body.
So the proposing body would be from the police department.
Correct, and so hence why the, the memo was jointly from the Chief Perry. Counselor Bedraco?
I just had, um, this is probably really off track, but I'm just curious, now since we are contracted with like a canine shelter, whatever, or canine facility, will this also, um, require staffing at some point?
Well, so that's a good question, how we deal with that is, and I think that's going to need to be part of the discussion going into the calculus that the, the PMBC needs to look at. So, you know, if we do, if we go the route, for example, of, of buying Connecticut Canine, and then, um, you know, that's a large facility, we only need like ten percent of it, but there's still a grooming facility, there's a training facility, there's a regular boarding facility. So we might want to think about going out to RFP and trying to find a vendor who could run it, and we serve as landlord, and we'd have our little spot there reserved for our animals, and that person, the operator, would then make sure the dogs are, you know, fed and get water and that kind of stuff. Um, so that's one option, and now on, on the flip side, if we were to go to our own permanent facility, you're right, we would need some sort of staffing solution. Um, you know, on a part-time basis, like Berlin, I think they have a full-time person and then a lot of volunteers that do it, but there's different models you could look at, like, um, you know, volunteers coming in for a couple hours on Saturday and Sunday, you know, maybe somebody checks it, if, if there's an alarm and somebody, you know, goes and checks it if the alarm goes off in the middle of the night. Those are, those are sort of pieces to be determined, but things that have to be part of that, that attention.
Thank you.
Counselor Ford? Thank you, Mayor, not a question, but just a comment that, um, obviously, to the questions that some folks had, we are quite a ways away from having a clear idea as to what kind of project this looks like. Uh, whether it is a renovation, or a purchase, or a new build, or whatever. Um, but I just want to commend you and the police department and your staff for making sure we don't get caught shoes the cruelest little pants down.
Yeah.
Because this is, you know, very impending, and it's good that we get the ball rolling on something like this so early, so thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to, uh, see what they come up with, and, you know, this is a good opportunity for the Permanent, Permanent Municipal Building Committee to, you know, get some, get some running, so I'm happy with that, appreciate that, Jonathan.
Uh, why don't you keep going on the next one? Okay. And then sort of like saying on the same topic, the, the next, um, the, the next, uh, the, the, the second project BMBC has to, has to focus on is the, the Chapman Street Facility, the fire facility, which was formerly, up until the early seventies, I believe, Fire Station Three. Uh, it was decommissioned, given to the town. We have a, the town attorney's opinion that it is under the control, it is because it was decommissioned, it's Fire Station, it is under our operational control. As we, as you know, the last two budget cycles, we've, council has appropriated CIP money for that, I think we have three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for that renovation. I don't know if that's, may need a little bit more, but we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. But, but really, the, the best use for that facility, I think both the fire department and the town agree, is not really for operational purposes, we wouldn't use it as an auxiliary firehouse or something like that. It's really a much-needed storage facility, whether it's for the SERP team, um, you know, cots and things like that, uh, on, on the town side, or it's for, um, some of the smaller equipment for the fire station, fire department. I think there's a way that we can find a kind of a mixed use for it, that both satisfies the town's needs and the fire department's needs. So I'd like to follow that same sort of procedure with Chapman Street, just because this has been going on, you know, certainly well before I got here, this discussion, what do we do with Chapman Street? And I want to get that, that ball rolling, too. So in the case of Chapman Street, the closing body would be the town, based on the town attorney's opinion, and the proposed, um, and, and really it would be the town as opposed, town generally under the town manager's kind of umbrella, as opposed to a specific operating department, just because we use it for storage generally. So it's kind of a general, um, thing. But obviously, we need to have some, a lot of involvement from the fire department because both for historical and sort of playing nice in the sandbox reasons, but also because they do have a need for, for storage, at least in the short term as well. So my proposed, uh, the proposed, uh, statement of need would be the decommissioned Fire Station Three is an historic structure that has fallen into a general state of neglect and needs repair. However, the facility's history and architecture are a central part of New England's identity and key to preserving our rich past. While a renovated facility has only limited, uh, use for day-to-day operations, a properly secured and upgraded, the facility could provide much-needed storage space, which is at a premium for both the fire department and the town.
Jonathan. Deputy Mayor Rada?
Yeah, just a, a question. I know that a year or even two years ago, um, in, in discussions, the fire department had put aside, and I don't recall the exact amount, for demolition, and then because of the need and the interest, uh, shifted that to, um, renovation. Do you know if that has been used? I know that there had been studies or they were.
No, I don't think it's been tapped into. There's three hundred and thirty-five thousand in CIP, and that's, I think, the, the combination of both last year's CIP and the previous year's CIP. That was obviously, that first year's CIP was before my time, but I, my understanding is it started off as a discussion about demolition and then moved to re- restoration. But that CIP account is under Joe Salamon as Facilities Director's purview, Aegis, if you will, not the fire department. So I think that was where we started, started to run into problems, was that the fire department wanted to write POs to access the money, but the money was under Joe Salamon's control. So there was sort of this miscommunication, and that's kind of what led to some of the, some of the, the discussions, let's say, over the last two years.
Thanks. Councilor Drago?
Um, yeah, as Deputy Mayor Rada stated, that this has been under discussion for a while, you know, a couple of years, um, and a lot of, um, eye in the sky kind of, uh, thinking about what this facility could be used for, and one of it was, you know, possibly art space or meeting room or even a little, tiny little part of it could be like a concession stand because of the, um, the bike path and the, um, the, the walking trails, whatever. Um, and I know it's all pie in the sky and storage is the best use, but I'm just wondering, does this statement of need limit it to only storage, or could it be amended to say provide much to do, much-needed storage space or other uses?
Yeah, you know what? That's a good question, and probably to err on the side of caution, I'll incorporate that amendment.
Okay.
Just because you're right, my intention is, as in, in teeing this up, is not to, to, to put the PMBC in a corner, it's, it's for them to come up with the best.
Use.
You know, I have the best use for the town. So I like that, and I'll, I'll.
Okay, thank you.
Grind that in.
You very much. Time to see that before. Any other questions on that? None, moving on to item C, Indian Hills Country Club lease. I would call, yeah, Miss, Miss Ryan. Lauren? Yes, on it.
Good evening. So, um, for about the last year or so, town staff has been working with the Board of Directors at the Indian Hill Country Club to review the existing lease between our two entities. Um, both because the lease will expire sooner rather than later, and also because the, um, Indian Hill Country Club is looking to leverage some financing for their capital projects, and the banks that they've been working with have indicated that they need a longer-term lease. So with those kind of two caveats in mind, we started reviewing the lease, we came up with some changes to propose to your subcommittee, just to modernize the lease, extend the term, um, clarify who owns what as far as equipment, personal property, the items in the pro shop, and then also, um, to streamline some of the processes that they had that relate to non-member resident use of the site, and some language in the existing lease that kind of, uh, prohibits them having flexibility with how they run their day-to-day operations. So with all that in mind, we are ready for you guys to submit this to your subcommittee and meet with some members of staff, as well as members of their Board of Directors, and hopefully come back in the next few months with a final lease for you all to approve.
Awesome, terrific.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Drago?
Sorry, I have a question. Um, Indian Hill is very near and dear to my heart, is one of the, I think it's a, it's a stellar, um, point of pride for the town of New England, as well as, you know, we have very diminished, um, land. And I get very nervous, um, with a lot of the stuff that's going around at the state level about, um, developable, developable land, and this council is very aware, um, and I think very in tune with protecting land, protecting, um, open space, protecting recreational space. But my fear is, um, in the future, there could be a whole different group of people sitting here, different economic conditions, whatever. And, you know, I've heard discussions that saying, oh, you know, you know, from non-golfers, actually, you know, that what a waste of time, nobody ever uses it, you know, wouldn't that be great if the town sold it and you put all the housing up there, or, you know, make it a nine-hole mini-course for, you know, Parks Rec and, you know, sell it off, whatever. I'm very concerned about, I know it's, it's just, and it's the, it's, this, not even rumors, it's just, you know, off-the-hand comments. Is there any way, is this land at all protected so that it could never, we'll never say never, but are there protections in place that it would not be sold off for use other than the golf or recreation?
Is there any conservation easements coming, any kind of encumbering the land, you know?
None that I know of.
I know it's zone public land, so it can only be used for, so, so in that case, it can only be used for state, you know, local government or, or institution.
Well, a state, you know, with eight oh zero zero two can impose housing, you know?
Well, that's, yeah.
So I just wonder, is there a way that while you're doing this, you can look into putting some protection?
Well, so we could, I mean, so that's, you would have to do.
It's a conservation.
You would have to do some sort of restricted deed covenant, um, uh, put, and that would be on us. I don't know how that works about the town putting restricted covenant on its own land.
Yeah, I don't know if that would be applicable.
Certainly talk to.
Can you please look?
Yeah.
Is anybody here opposed to looking into that?
Not at all.
No, I'm fine with it.
Not at all. Um, I think it's a great idea. And so, and just thinking about a restricted covenant that would limit it to either operations as a active or passive recreation area or open space or something like that. Okay. Okay, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We can definitely.
Just, just to point that point a little bit, what, what's the, what will be the term of this lease? Fifty years?
Uh, thirty.
Thirty years, okay. Um, can we extend that?
You could consider it with your subcommittee, sure, yeah.
To like safeguard something, at least we know it'll be a golf course for at least fifty years or whatever, just to help that end of it, too. So that's awesome. Perfect, those guys. But our members of the Indian Hills Subcommittee. It's work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
All right, Jonathan, you're back up. Item D, right of first refusal letter.
We received, um, this is sort of part two of the, um, Cedar Crest Hospital disposition issue, so a year ago, we were talking about that right of first refusal on the ten acres with the three cottages. The state offered it to us for a million dollars. And at the time, we, we turned it down. Um, the state has simply, since going out to RFP, I think they have, I believe, somebody under contract to, to, to do something, the lands last been surveyed, parceled out and all that, but, uh, there, there is something brewing at the state level with that, that, that sale. So this would be the other portion of that, twenty-eight acres of the fifty-three point five acre parcel. So if you, on the, on the, in my memo, on the second page of my memo, there's a map, it's kind of crude and it's not to scale, but basically the, the cottages would be on the north side of the property, about ten acres on the north side, and then on the very, very northern strip of the land, right at the, the, the edge of the Gulf Quarry, and then extending along the western side of the land, there's now a concert, or there, DAS is in the process of putting a conservation easement, and, and probably, I think, I believe in the town's name, on that, um, on that side. So this would be to sell the remaining sort of area or, or including and around the, the actual hospital. So they have come up with a appraised value, well, based on our appra, our assessed value that we just issued last two weeks ago, um, they are valuing the, the twenty, these twenty-eight acres at fifteen point three five eight million dollars, minus one point two million dollars for the, the ten acres with the cottages on them, to come up with a number of fourteen million one hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. So they're giving us the right of first refusal. I mean, my recommendation is that that is not a good use of town, uh, town dollars, precious taxpayer resources, the, the land likely has some remediation that would be needed to do to it. Obviously, the hospital is there, probably would be, need to be demoed, there's lots and lots of costs here. In addition, I'll remind you that is also zone public land. So if a developer were to come in, obviously, there's the eight thirty G is always, you know, option out there, but, um, we would really be in the driver's seat as far as what, how it could be redeveloped. So I don't see, at the end of the day, we can use zoning to get to our sort of goals for the property rather than spending our own money on it. I mean, if, if it doesn't sell, you could envision a scenario many years down the road where we do one of those sort of national welding site kind of deals where somehow the, the land is needed to us, we apply for brownfield money, to work with a developer to, to do it what we need to do, but I think we, we only get to that stage when the state has basically given up and has no way of, 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 of selling it, where we're not there yet. So my recommendation would be to politely decline on this. So, and frankly, um, yeah, just play the decline on it and I don't have a resolution attached to this, I don't think. Yeah, so, I mean, you can just sort of tell me that you're, because this doesn't require a, like a resolution, it just requires the ma, the mayor to sign it. So if you want to just give feedback now and we can take action, otherwise, there's no problem in putting it on a, a future agenda.
I, I don't think we can afford it, so I'm, I'm a no. So we'll find with what you're suggesting.
Yeah.
And there is, I'm sure, significant.
That remediation up there.
Yeah.
What we don't know could be more.
What you don't, yeah, yeah.
More than what this is, so, yeah.
Yeah, and moreover, that's a good point. Like, they're giving us sixty days, there's no way in the world we could, even if we were interested, we could do a full phase one, two, and three.
Any objections from council on that? Sign whatever you need.
Please, Jonathan. Uh, last one, uh, twenty twenty-six town council meeting dates. Uh, looks pretty straightforward, I know we checked it, cross-checked it pretty, um, holidays, I didn't see any issues there, and I appreciate you leaving off the August date, giving us a little vacation. Thank you.
Did I do that? I didn't realize.
Summer vacation, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Um, I don't have any questions or comments, and any questions or comments from council on the, uh, dates, calendar for next year? All right, awesome. Leave that up there for the next meeting. That concludes new business. You're back up again, Jonathan, anything, uh, to report?
Yeah, I have a few things I want to bring to your attention. Um, first, uh, as you know, we're going to do a special meet, so, so, we'll, we'll formally advertise them as special meetings for the tours of the four Garfield Street area buildings, meeting with, with department heads for all council members, because this will be done as a special meeting, uh, publicly be invited as well. There'll also be in January, on January thirteenth at six P M, I'll, I can give another reminder of this as we get closer to the date, a, a training on the Freedom of Information Act, particularly as it relates to, uh, council members, but also other members, uh, volunteer members of our boards and commissions are welcome to attend that as well. And that'll be run by Russell Blair, who's the outreach coordinator for the entire state in the, at the FLE office. Um, I want to give a big, almost touched, I, well, I'm beyond touched by this. The generosity that we saw in the New England community in the last three or four weeks, uh, as there were the, the looming SNAP, uh, uh, cut off the SNAP benefits, um, the amount of food, and I don't know how much it works out to in tonnage or pounds or calories or any of that, but this, the, the sheer volume of food that, that the food bank, donations that the food bank received from residents was astounding. So astounding, in fact, that all of rooms two oh one A and two oh one B are filled to the brim with, um, with food donations. And those will eventually, you know, sort of be delivered out over, over the next couple of weeks as we get closer to Christmas, but it really, it warms the couples to see just how generous, uh, Newington residents were, so amazing. I want to congratulate Jen Hebert. Uh, Jen is, was just promoted to the position of Assistant Director of Libraries, replacing Karen Benner. Um, Jen has been serving as the Director of, um, of Reference for the last, I want to say, three or four years, um, a Newington, Newington born and bred, um, and is going to be a great, uh, addition in that, in that more of a leadership role. We're currently undertaking a couple of high-profile recruitments. We're looking for an Assistant Finance Director, that's still out on the street. We're now looking for, uh, not one, but two rec supervisors, um, and we have two amazingly talented rec supervisors, for very different reasons, but very understandable reasons, have given their notice in the last couple of weeks, and they will be missed. And finally, we're excited to be hiring for a planning tech, um, as well. Um, the, the Garfield Street project, as you probably see, is wrapping up. This sort of last major piece is to do the line striping, that will happen at night, was actually supposed to happen tonight, but because of the rain, um, we're going to have to be delayed, so it may have to be delayed until after Thanksgiving, but it's best to do it at night so that, to minimize the amount of traffic that's going to, you know, drive over the, the pain and spirit all over the road. We have some upcoming, interesting upcoming presentations for council at the next meeting. We're going to have Joe Salamon and the, as, as well as the consultant on the feasibility studies for the highway and grounds garage, uh, present, um, some of their findings for potential, uh, future capital projects. Uh, next meeting, we're also going to do the present, the annual presentation of the Parks and Rec Awards, Bill DeMay on his team. I'm also going to want to have Bill back at a future meeting to talk about his enterprise funds, the Parks and Rec Enterprise Fund as well, so a lot of interesting presentations coming up. For the new members of council, Hilda, Nancy, and Kelly, you have your business cards there.
Thank you.
It's come to my attention that some of you incumbent members of council may have exhausted your supply, so if you need a refill on business cards, let me and/or Heather know, and we will get that replenished in the next couple of days. And finally, I, this was not something I was planning on, um, on, uh, discussing, but when I saw it, there is a sort of a dump of paper in front of you. And, and I'm going to make sure that we don't give you as many hard copies of some of these things, which you already receive in your packets, as you receive. But a question that I've always had, and no need to give me an answer now, is we always give you guys a second hard copy of the packet on your, on, on, at, at the table, at the dais, but, um, but that you've already received on the Friday before. How many of you guys benefit from this? And how many of you, like, is this a sort of a waste to have this? You don't have to answer me now, if you want to think about it, but certainly could save some time and some money on copies, not to double. Is there anybody who really wants it, the double copy?
I think I have one or two on hand in case someone forgot it, but I don't really think we need everyone to have another.
All right, I like that. That's a good.
I mean, I get my packet digitally on Fridays, so I like having the paper one here, just so I'm not looking at it on the phone. I like having a paper copy here, but I only need one. I don't need two. If you prefer to send me a packet, so it makes it easier, that's fine, too, but.
Yeah, I would say the only, I get a hard copy on Fridays, and I really appreciate the delivery. The only thing that I would say we would need, or I would need if, if there are any changes or amendments or any additions. Put those on my desk. Otherwise, I don't need two copies.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Save some money, for sure.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you so much.
Sorry, I happened, I really don't read your report all the way through, but.
I did.
But I did, something didn't pop out at me on page one, where the very last bullet, participated in CROG Executive Committee and Legislative Committee meetings, as well as in a working group facilitated by CROG on public safety at Connecticut Fast Track stations. I know I've seen occasionally in the news that there have been some assaults, robberies, whatever. Can you just kind of explain to us?
Sure, so absolutely. So, um, yeah, so it was, it was with New Britain, us, Hartford, and what's other? There's, there's another town that the Fast Track goes through, our branch of Fast Track goes through. Anyways, we, was it West Hartford? Yeah, that's where, yeah. And, and there is concern about, so the state police has jurisdiction over, over the Fast Track line, and local police's response as a secondary backup in case there's, you know, whether robbery, mugging, that kind of thing. So as, as a practical matter, it's not because state police has primary jurisdiction. You know, it's not, we don't get a whole lot of calls. We get, we get a fair number of calls, but not, it's not like an everyday occurrence that we get calls to back up. But I think what, what, what the state police and working with the Department of Transportation's security team is wanted sort of to talk about more collaboration between the departments as far as sharing information about, you know, what they're seeing online. The biggest issue we have with the Fast Track line from a security standpoint is that people will, and I don't want to paint with too broad a brush, but people will kind of use it as their getaway car. They'll, they'll come to the Stop and Shop on Fen Road and then run out, you know, steal whatever they're going to steal, run back to the Fast Track line, catch a, catch a bus, and then they're gone before they can be caught. So it's more like a conduit for shoplifting than, that's from our perspective as a local police department, than a, than a source of crime in and of itself. But that's not to say that crime doesn't exist in the Fast Track line. So those were the kinds of things that we're talking about and how there could be better information sharing, you know, how cameras could be, information from, you know, the security cameras could be shared among.
So is this going to be ongoing?
I don't think so. I mean, it's, and it's really, I got the ball rolling just because I think the chief had a, had a conflict that day, but I would really turn it over to him, to the extent to which there's additional moving stuff.
Okay, thank you.
But it was an interesting topic, for sure.
Counselor Floyd?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just have, like, extra time on my hands, because I do, I go through the report.
No kids.
No kids. I, I actually did have one specific question, which was about, on the second page, the overtime for the police department and specifically the patrol. I noticed right now, year-to-date, we have a much higher expanded balance than we did at the same time last year. Do you know what might be driving that at all?
So.
Patrol overtime, second.
So I, I, I don't know. I don't know at the top of my head. And actually, I would expect, honestly, and I don't.
To be the other.
To the other way, because we have a full complement of officers now.
Right.
We have a number of officers in the academy, so they're technically on, you know, they're on payroll, but they're not actually in cars, so that may have something to do with it. Okay, but let me, let me talk to the chief and I'll give you more.
Officer, okay. And I'll just say, note about, thank you for always being so diligent, answering our questions. I had a lot of questions before as a counselor. I certainly have a lot of questions now. And I know we're all in the same boat, asking so much of you at all moments of the day, and that's on top of the residents and the staff that you communicate with on a daily basis. We're just extremely grateful, so thank you, Jonathan.
Appreciate that, absolutely.
And counselor. All right, moving right along to council liaison committee reports. Have you got any updates? Not a lot has gone on the past few weeks.
We had a pool, um, building committee update. I have an update.
Perfect.
We met last night. Um, the pool, um, Weston and Sam, and Sampson provided a detailed presentation summarizing their investigations of both Mill Pond and Churchill pools. Their assessment found that both facilities required major repairs. Neither pool is fully compliant with current codes. Necessary upgrades include significant repairs to pools lining and bringing bathhouses up to code. Safety despite the deficiencies, Weston and Sampson confirmed that both pools are safe to open for the upcoming season. So that was good news to hear. Renovations, options, the consultants presented three different options, each with a low end and a high end estimate. All option, I mean, all options assume the pools remain in their current locations with renovations focusing on modernizing and achieving full code compliance. Depending on the option selected, repairing the existing pool shell in place, expected it will extend their lifespan by, depending on which one we, which option we go with, anywhere from 20 to 40 years. The scope of repairs and upgrades include deck replacement, mechanical room improvements, main pool renovations, new splash pads, installation, update safety and maintenance equipment, removal of the outdated radar system, and the committee plans to meet in December and discuss options in detail and determine what best way to move forward.
Thank you, counselor.
You're welcome.
Counselor Floyd?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Counselor Boudreaux and I attended the zoning commission meeting last week where, or maybe perhaps a week before, where the zoning commission began discussing the town center master plan and potential changes that may be coming down the pike, recommendations for changes that may be coming down the pike from staff. So they are thinking about that, just like we are. They also approved a secondary egress at Karma's Closet. And then Counselor Boudreaux and I also attended the Economic Development Commission's monthly meeting. And just want to remind folks, the passport program is ongoing right now. You can stop by any range of participating businesses in town up through the 30th of November. Get a stamp on your passport and be, you know, have it submitted to win a nice prize. So please participate in that and go support our local businesses. And I also just wanted to highlight two specific business openings over the past month or so in Newington. One was Marketplace Kitchen and Bar. It's got a lot of attention. Food is very good. I stopped by. I know other folks have, so.
On Market Square?
No, it's, uh, it's where Shake Shack.
Marketplace.
And yes, it's, it's fantastic. Go ahead, check it out. And also, just this past weekend, Amelia Soy Aromas, a brand new candle store, opened up in the New Britain Avenue Business District area and got the chance to chat with some folks there, and they're very excited to be the beneficiaries of all the great new work that's going to happen in that business district for their business. So go ahead and support those businesses when you can. Anything else, Counselor Boudreaux?
Thank you, counselor. Further updates from council? Seeing none, we'll move back to public participation for the second time. If you're in the room and like speaking public participation, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. You're on Zoom. Please use the raise hand function, and we will alternate between in the room and over Zoom. Come on up. You got the board.
Do my best. I had an easel that felt like maybe it was done to that. It was also raining. So I'm going to use the board, but.
Go ahead, state your name and address for the record one more time.
I'll do my best to turn it through. I'm Jacob Nolton. I live at 10 Hillside Street. And yeah, I am a land use planner by profession, and I just thought it would be remiss of me if I didn't try to help out with some plans that were going on in town. So I just first want to say, great job on the master plan for the center of town. Props to Paul and the team that worked on it. And I just wanted to take some time to point out some things that I thought were really great and some things that maybe think about as you move forward with this plan. So the first thing that I learned in planning school is when you're looking for growth, try to think about what already works in town, right? And so looking at the existing property, we know that Market Square and Main Street are fairly successful. We want to look at why they're successful. The first thing I can imagine is that there's a street grid going on. My lines ain't going to be straight, and we're trying not to deal. But there's a street grid going on, which allows for people to easily get around both by foot and on car. If you take a wrong turn, you know at the next turn, you can still get back to where you go. The next thing is parking is behind the existing buildings, which means that you don't have a lot of breakup in your, in your streetscape, meaning that it's comfortable for people to get around. The next thing is you have buildings oriented towards the street, so you have a sense of enclosure. And what that means is that you have kind of this height that feels like you're being hugged by the space while you're walking around. It also means that while you're walking, you can easily look into the store. So say I'm going to Carvel, and I haven't seen Rooster Cove before. I look inside, I say, oh, that's a cool spot. Now I know I want to go back there later. So taking these things in mind, we know that these new developments or that are proposed, right? This is not necessarily set in stone, but they're oriented towards the street, and they place parking behind. So that is something fairly good. And right, part of this is because it's somewhat hard to tell what it's going to look like from a bird's eye view, so I'm trying to help out with that. The things that stand out to me with this new development isn't abnormal for kind of consultants that I've seen propose things. It seems a bit random, right? Like, these buildings are angled kind of diagonally. You don't really have access points until you get to here or here, and all of this traffic is placed onto a major arterial, which poses a similar issue to what we have on Cedar Street and Fen, where you have over saturation cul-de-sacs. All your traffic gets put on one. You can't cut through, find alternative paths. So the obvious thing that stands out to me is what you learn in planning school is start with a street grid. You start with a street grid, and what I would propose, or just think about, is extending Market Square through until you obviously get to the grade change at Cedar Mountain, and then build a street grid around. So you have kind of this area here. You can maybe connect it if you wanted to. That already acts as an ability if you connect it this way and then this way, to kind of have that street grid go. And then just orient your buildings towards the street, the same way that you have here. Basically, you just continue your already successful corridor. And then obviously, what was really important to folks in town was recreation and affordable housing for seniors, which also goes hand in hand for affordable housing for youth retention in town. And you can just fit it in there wherever you want. So I still am very happy with the fact that you had affordable housing considered, and it's just a matter of placement and making sure that you fit the most amount of things without having some excess space. The other thing I wanted to point out is that you want to put parking behind your developments instead of having this kind of traditional style that we've seen in Newington since the 80s, which is having a sea of parking in front of your housing. You don't want to step out into pavement. You don't want your kids stepping out into a parking lot. You want to step out into community and be able to participate with your space, especially in an area so close to where most people find activity. So if you are oriented, orienting your buildings towards the street, you can just place your parking behind. And then wherever you don't want housing or development, I recommend placing a park, and that park will be successful because you have other uses around it, and that's kind of park 101. That way, you get the population who wants to go to the park. You also get the population who might want to go grab lunch and then visit the park after. So that's basically the gist. I'll be around. I'll come to the public hearings and stuff like that, but I just wanted to put that in your head as you move forward. Those were my initial thoughts while looking at this.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
One quick thing. I have 30 seconds. I'll put this.
Ah, you're over by 30 seconds.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
My name is Andre Andreas, and I'm at 76 Vincent Drive. And this is Director George Drew Matthew. Something you said was very telling to me. You're worried about police overtime when you guys are willing to spend millions of dollars on remodeling a pool and building a town hall annex or emergency center. And, you know, it just shows where you are on public safety. We also have a hotel that's been put up and another apartment complex all on Cedar Street within the last year. I happen to live off of Cedar Street. It's very busy. The police are always going to these emergencies, especially at that hotel. So I think it's just very telling to me, again, where you stand on public safety. If you're worried about a little bit of overtime, that the cops are, you know, putting their lives out there to keep the town of Newington safe. And yeah, yeah, sure, they make a few extra bucks when the cost of living is already more expensive, and you're going to complain about overtime. This doesn't make any sense to me. These guys are out there keeping you safe, keeping us safe, and you're worried about a few bucks but willing to spend millions on something, you know, that most of the town of Newington doesn't want. Very telling to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Andre.
Anybody else in the room or over? Oh, we do have one on Zoom. Ms. Lyons, go right ahead. The newest member of our ethics committee.
Rose Lyons, 46 Elton Drive. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for confirming the town manager's nomination of me for the Board of Ethics. As many of you know, that's a little committee near and dear to my heart, having first gone on it when issues came up and we found that there was no forum to be found to file a complaint and that the board had not met in years. So I'm hoping that both parties will keep an eye on your de facto members and members that are expiring. And I know now that the town manager is looking at his nominations for unaffiliated appointments. So I do hope that I never have to attend a meeting other than an annual meeting. I don't have such a great track record because it seems every time I get on, something happens. And they conned me into going on the first time because they said, oh, they never meet. But in any case, I thank you for your approval. Counselor Boudreaux, I thank you for ringing up on the issue with Indian Hill Country Club recently with the legislation that passed regarding housing. There was something thrown out on Facebook, well, what happens if the town decides that they want to do something with Eddie Farm? Well, I don't think they can do anything with Eddie Farm. I don't think they can do anything with the young property. But I do know, and from previous attendance at CIP meetings, and I'm talking 10 years ago or so, that after one of the meetings, or during one of the meetings, a former facilities director, that don't you think it would be great, Rose, if they just took and got rid of Indian Hill and we could build houses over there? I said, no, I don't think it's such a great idea. So the lease coming up in Indian Hill was interesting to me on the agenda. I didn't even know it was on there tonight until recently. I'd like to see or ask, and I know you don't respond at this particular time, if there's definitions of the other leased properties as who's responsible for what. Once again, I go back to attending CIP meetings, and I questioned why the town was putting a roof on the American Legion. Not that I cared, but I had heard previously that they were responsible for certain things. We were responsible for others. So I'd like to know if there's a clear cut process that we know who owns what, who's responsible for what. Recently, there's been discussions over the facilities between the fire department and the town. So that's something that, again, has been going on for at least 10 years in discussions, but nobody does anything about it until something gets brought up. As far as the police overtime, and I'll let Matt speak for himself, but I know that this is a blast from the past for me, because I remember Tony Bonei being a counselor, and every meeting he would ask about the police overtime, not so much complaining about it, asking why we don't get more police officers if we're using that much money for overtime. Again, I want to thank you all for what you do for the town and look forward to meeting the new members. I think I've met Nancy at the.
You did, Rose.
Try to revision meeting and things. Charter revision meeting, and things we have, so, um, nice to see you on board, and again, have a happy and healthy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in their room or over Zoom that would like to speak in public participation? Seeing none, we'll move on to remarks by counselors. Councilor Nieves?
My comments are relative to, you know, this evening's meeting, um, it's been interesting, the comments, uh, that we've heard from the public and what the, uh, council uh, discussed and had on its agenda, but, um, just, uh, uh, just a real concern, um, about the housing and the tax presentation, uh, the property values here in town. I, I, I think it was, uh, just, uh, really, uh, excellent. Uh, my only comment relative to that presentation was, uh, and I'm, I'm certainly, uh, uh, very supportive of transparency. And I just had one thought relative to that presentation that I, I failed to comment on, uh, earlier, um, that, um, we make it easy, uh, for our town residents, um, I believe in transparency, uh, and I think with transparency, we're able to uh, learn a little bit more, um, about what's going on in our town and, and our own property values and giving our, our constituents, our town residents, the ability to access information that, uh, is there. Um, I also heard an awful lot about the concern for senior housing. Um, I think that's something that, uh, certainly, uh, we need to really, uh, look into and, and try to address those needs for our senior, uh, folks in town. And I've also heard a little bit about veterans and just giving them, uh, the, the tax breaks, uh, maybe making that a little bit more, um, open or just figure out a way to just share more information so that people have more access about those specific, um, benefits um, in times that are so, um, costly, I think, for people across the board. And in terms of the comment that Gail made, uh, about public, uh, used lands, uh, just preserving. I know there's not much land here in town, but, uh, making sure that we, uh, try to keep those lands for public use and just try to preserve them and give some thought to, uh, how best to address, uh, the needs that some of the folks, uh, brought up, brought about in terms of, uh, public, public used lands. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor, Counselor Bedraco.
Okay, here's my little annual speech, um, about Thanksgiving. I feel like it's the fourth stepchild of all the holidays.
Oh, no.
It gets, it really, because stores haven't found a way to commercialize it. Um, Thanksgiving gets so lost, and even now, people are changing the name from Thanksgiving to Friendsgiving, which really, I mean, it bothers me because there's a reason it's called Thanksgiving. Um, and I want to acknowledge just in, over the past couple of years and serving on the council, how much we have to be thankful for in our community. Um, first of all, you know, people immediately around us, we think about our friends, our neighbors, our family, but there's also people that we don't know that I think we really need to give thanks for and stuff, um. For example, we're living in a community where if there's a problem or an accident or a fire, we know that, um, we're going to take care of, help is on the way. Um, we can go for a walk outside of our house or open the door and we're safe. We can go down the street. Um, the trash from our overabundance, which we have an awful, you know, uh, we're very fortunate. Um, we toss it in a can and somebody comes and picks it up for us. Um, I rake my leaves, I don't have to bag them, thank God, uh, they get hauled away for me. Um, I drive to work, our highway department takes care of our roads, they're, they're good roads, they're, um, they're, they're smooth, they're clear. I visit the library, visit our parks, um, they're free and they're well-maintained. And, um, we have a council that despite like the Rs or the Ds after our names, um, we're partners, I think, um, and we're working together for a stronger community. So all these things, not every town, not every community has what we have. Um, so, and we also, it's not just the people, you know, the workers or the counselors, but we have residents who, like you said, care. I mean, filling two rooms with, with, with more than was handed out. Um, our, our residents help their neighbors, they help in churches, they help, you know, like, uh, other community organizations, they serve on our boards and commissions. We're all working together, um, to make our town like a great place to live. And for that, I mean, I know there's a lot of negativity around, but I think we all have an awful lot to be grateful for. And that's my thing, and I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Rada.
Yes, I, thank you, I thank you. Um, Counselor Bedraco, uh, much needed, much appreciated, uh, your commentary, and just want to wish everyone who celebrates Thanksgiving or whatever they're doing this weekend, this long, this long weekend, um, that remain safe, safe travels for those that are traveling, um, get some exercise after you eat, walk some of that turkey off if you're eating turkey or not, and, um, just a happy Thanksgiving for, that I want to extend to my colleagues on the council and residents in the community.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kiki. Counselor Floyd?
Likewise, um, I can't say it any better than Deputy Mayor Rada or Counselor Bedraco, but, um, we have an amazing community that we live in, truly, and, um, I marvel every day, and I'm sure we all do, when you drive down our streets and, um, just think about uh, how unique our community is in that, uh, we don't suffer from a lot of the issues that other communities might. Um, we come together when we need a hand, uh, in big ways and in small ways, right? Just your neighbor, you know, if your neighbor needs something. We have a culture in this town that is very unique in these really troubling times. And that is a culture that tells us to come together and support one another and be there for each other. And, um, you know, I have such, I'm so grateful to know that, um, for on a week like this where a lot of folks can experience loneliness because they don't have somewhere to go, that a lot of those folks are going to have somewhere to go because their neighbor will have reached out, or will have cooked them a meal, or they'll have gone to their church or their synagogue, and, um, and that, that's really amazing. Um, and I think we have to be grateful for that, so, um, I'm certainly grateful to work with everybody here um, and to know everybody here and to call you good friends, and I hope you have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving, everybody, I hope everyone has a safe, healthy and, uh, enjoyable Thanksgiving and, uh, you know, get, get some food in you and watch some football.
Take a nap.
And then take a nap, and then do it again.
And then do it again.
Yep. All right, we'll move on to informational items. Um, not to, not to, not to diminish what was just said by, by Counselor Bedraco, but I need to point out the Night of Lights is coming, this is our last meeting before the Night of Lights, next Friday, December fifth. Uh, Mar- it right on, right in town, center of town, it's gonna be awesome, uh, we're singing, so.
That's right.
We always sing wonderfully.
Hope everyone's been practicing.
Hilda and Nancy Kelly.
I have my hat.
Missed a lot of rehearsals, so you gotta really.
Yes.
Use me.
New counselors have to do their own verse.
Yeah.
But, uh, that's, that's what we got on, Counselor Tinajus.
Um, also, uh, the tickets for the libraries, what the press goes on sale, uh, Monday, the first. They usually sell out in like two or three days, I think, so, um, you gotta go to the library in person, I think it's a coin dollars, uh, per ticket cash.
Might be thirty.
Thirty dollars per ticket cash, um, so, yeah, get on it, it's January sixteenth, it's a really good time. I missed it last year, so I told myself I absolutely will be there, right when they open up.
Thank you, Counselor, for that reminder. Any other updates?
Being none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hold on.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Floyd, second by Counselor Gonzalez, any discussion on adjournment? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or赞成? All right, motion carries unanimously, we are adjourned, nine thirty-eight PM, great meeting, everyone.